Okay, so let's vote on moving unfinished business to just before public hearing. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Alkantra?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Are you unanimous on the amendment?
Uh, Councilman Cooper?
Yes, sir, just a suggestion, I don't know if we can do this, under item two resolutions, I'm wondering if we can put three, four, five, six, and seven as one public hearing, seeing how they all relate to the budget, and then if individuals want to come and talk on each specific one, they can.
Okay, so moving to combine the resolution twenty-five, that's your one, two, three, four, and five into one public hearing?
Right, yes, thank you.
All right, is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion about that? Just trying to keep it...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm just...
Councilmember...
Oh.
Councilmember Graver, sorry, trying to remember the name.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just wondering, I'm just concerned that if someone has quite a bit to say about several different resolutions on there, that they won't be able to have enough time to speak to it in three minutes, is that correct, that they would still only have three minutes to speak to all of that?
Um, I guess technically that would be true.
Yeah, I guess my thought was that if they have to talk on each one, they can come and talk on each individual one if they would like, you know, as opposed to each having, you know, let's have a public hearing, let's close it, let's vote, let's whatever, you know, we just do it one fell swoop.
I understand that, but I don't know if that's the way we could do it, I don't know if we could give them three minutes for each one, or if it would just be still three minutes total?
Um...
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we could.
More time for each...
If, yeah, if they're willing to speak to more than one subject, we'll just go three minutes at each one.
Okay.
Good luck, excellent, so that, okay, did we get a second for that? We did, all right, any more discussion on that? Okay, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Alkantra?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Are you unanimous?
All right, is there any other rearrangements for the agenda? Okay, I think we might be ready to vote on the previous agenda as amended. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alkantra?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Okay. Now we have our agenda, um, we've got the approval of minutes of the previous meeting's October fifteenth special, October fifteenth emergency, October twenty-second regular, October twenty-ninth special meeting, and November twelfth regular meeting. Um, do we want to approve all of those at once, or do we want to take them one at a time?
Move to approve all of them together.
Okay.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded, any discussion on the minutes? All right, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alkantra?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Okay, and, uh, next we have a proclamation, supporting local entrepreneurs and small business Saturday. Uh, will you... Think you've got maybe a chamber president?
Yep.
All the presidents up there, okay. So, um...
House President, just like Christmas.
Yeah, House President.
Just like a...
There's a ghost.
So, Small Business Saturday, held each year on Saturday after Thanksgiving, is a nationwide movement that spotlights the critical role small businesses play in building vibrant communities and driving local economies. In Alaska, where more than ninety-nine percent of the businesses are classified as small, this day provides a unique opportunity for residents to make a meaningful impact by shopping with their neighbors and helping sustain the state's economy. Small Business Saturday is not just about shopping, it's about supporting the businesses that are the backbone of Alaska's communities, said John Bitner, Alaska's SBDC State Director. These businesses create a fabric that defines our towns and helps them develop their distinct personalities, all while employing the local people and supporting local causes. By shopping locally on November thirtieth and throughout the holiday seasons, Alaskans can make a huge impact in their communities and help build a strong, stronger, more resilient state economy. Palmer Chamber is sponsoring Shop Palmer, get ready for another shopping extravaganza and a chance for customers to win big. This program will run from November twentieth to December twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. Small businesses keep our community vibrant through the backbone of Palmer, creating jobs, boosting the economy, and enriching our neighborhoods, said Kelly McKay-Dolphy, Greater Palmer Chamber President. Small Business Saturday is a wonderful way to support our local small businesses in Palmer. The holiday magic's alive in well in Palmer, December thirteenth to fifteenth is Colony Christmas two thousand twenty-four. Celebrate the holidays as only Palmer, Alaska can, join the those near and far, and dear in the fun and festive that Colony Christmas has to offer. Hayride's gingerbread contest, cornhole tournament, cookie contests, parade of lights, fireworks, multiple craft fairs, and so much more. So, in witness that, I set my hand on the seal of the city of Palmer to fix the twenty-sixth day of November two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you.
Do you want to say a word?
Not really. Thank you for supporting the small businesses, so it is very big, and it's very important for all the small businesses.
Thank you for all of you. Any else? All right.
Oh, good evening, Mr. Member, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I do have a written report in here and do want to verbally recognize Chief Shelton and Commander La Croix, both for hitting twenty-five years of law enforcement experience. Chief Shelton has served the city of Palmer for the full twenty-five years, and Commander La Croix has been here for twenty-two years, so that's, that's fifty years of law enforcement experience in the city of Palmer. Also, as mentioned in the written report, we're struggling, or we have had struggles with the city of Palmer website, that's www.palmerak.org. Uh, there's been a, we've switched over formats, and the old format has been sticking in some, on some platforms. On the bottom right-hand corner of the website, if you see Civic Plus, it says, you know, provided by Civic Plus down the bottom right-hand corner, that's the new format, that's the new website. If it says municode.org, that's the old website. So if anybody does see that, please let us know at City Hall, and just so we know, and we can, we can continue to work getting that corrected. I believe that's a DNS, a domain, domain name server error that we're still working on. Uh, the last thing I'll report on in this report will be the, um, the HR provider. I have been back and forth with them, and have told them that we intend to, to contract with them, I'm just waiting on a written agreement, and when I have that written agreement, it'll go to the city attorney for review, and then I hope to have that signed either tomorrow or Monday, so we can get moving. There's a couple of HR issues I need to go through with them, as well as the city manager process, and the hiring, the, the new HR director process. And are there any questions?
Council, have any questions for the manager? Okay. Uh, next is the mayor's report, I've got a written report there, and part of that was mentioning Small Business Saturday, and, uh, is there any questions for me from the council? All right, uh, city clerk's report.
I don't have a formal report, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, any questions with the clerk from the council? All right, uh, Madam Attorney, are you there, Sarah, do you have a report for us?
Yes, I am here, and I, I have a, I'll be very brief, because we have quite the agenda today, um, but the city council had tasked me to look at code regarding the agenda and the agenda process, and to see about adding into that code a process for all agenda items to list the sponsors of that agenda item, um, for that sponsor information to be included into the agenda packet, and to have a spreadsheet or a list on the city website of agenda items, date, purpose, and the agenda item sponsor, whether it's the two city council members, the mayor, or a department head through the city manager. The creation of the agenda and the agenda packets for city council meeting is defined in code two point oh four one zero, which says that the agenda for each meeting will be prepared by the manager and the clerk after consultation with the mayor, and then that the agenda shall include any discussion item requested in writing and signed by the mayor or two council members. Um, I will be preparing this legislation draft, and I will be submitting it to the city manager, the mayor, the clerk's office, and city council for it to be proposed to you and considered at a future council meeting, but what I'm suggesting right now is that, um, I just wanted to share with you, I think that what could be done to meet that request that I was tasked to do is to add in that, quote, "This written request shall include the dates and names of the sponsors requesting the item to be placed on the agenda, and this request will be included in the agenda packet and will be published on the city's website for the public." So, that form should look really similar to the data sheet that you receive in every agenda packet for each piece of legislation. An example of that information is first located on this agenda packet on page twenty-eight, but this information is only included in agenda packets for the legislation and the tasks for council. So, I just wanted to let you know I'm working on that, and I'll get a draft before you soon. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions from our attorney, from the council? Okay. Uh, next we have audience participation. Council meeting rules protect your right to testify and be heard even if others in the room disagree with you. Council meeting rules also ensure that those attending can express their views if they do not interfere with the rights of others to see and hear the proceedings. At all times, order and decorum will be maintained in keeping with the civility and dignity of the legislative process. Please be respectful during audience participation. So we'll open, uh, we have a sign-up sheet there. Oh, thank you, Mr. Manager. We'll, uh, open audience participation, and, uh, we've got some people signed up. Okay, Michelle Kincaid, I know I just said your name, but please start with your name, and you have three minutes.
I think it's on. I think it's on. Um, Michelle Kincaid, good evening. Regarding the railroad tracks, I'm asking the city council to consider having a public meeting at the depot. People didn't understand that the track fix is really a track removal, and then the, I'm here tonight to talk about the parking issue. Apply common sense. Why allow high parking needs outdated code to damage other businesses? Palmer doesn't need to spend fifty grand to study parking deficit in order to fix the parking needs of high parking, uh, businesses. Planning and zoning didn't talk about the easy solutions, instead they talked about parking at the ice rink, taking a shuttle, creating public parking, it's not the taxpayers' problem, and it won't be where it's needed. Spending five hundred grand on a one-way angle parking is somebody's pet project. The architect said that would do nothing to fix where the problem exists. Another high parking needs can pop up anywhere. They never talked about requiring high parking needs to provide their own parking. The easy example was a local restaurant, thirty-five seats, um, they were taking up one parking space for every one point six six guest. They were required seven spots, they used twenty-one spots. That's fourteen extra cars on the street blocking somebody else's small business. That's three hundred percent beyond what the code is, and that's what the parking problem is. Use your common sense to update the high parking needs codes, and ask planning and zoning to use theirs. Protect smaller businesses that don't require, and that doesn't require a study. Update the high parking needs code in both places, the CBD and Ala Palmer. That's really important, because a pop-up restaurant that causes problems for the neighborhood, that could be anywhere, so you need to require them to have their own parking. Waivers shouldn't be allowed for high parking need businesses. A waiver, that just means block another business. Restaurants, they use three hundred percent more than what the code allows. Why allow the worst parking offender to damage another small business? Fix the wording. I ask council to give written notice community development, as they have interpreted it wrong and are counting illegal parking. They're counting parking that is not designated, it's no parking with the yellow zone. Restaurant code should really be one per two point two guests. That accommodates staff, and is thirty percent less than what's really used. If you use one per three, that's eighty percent less than what they really use. Seating, you need to count outdoor seating, if anybody does rooftop seating and standing room. Parking fractions should be rounded up, eleven point six seven rounded up to twelve. A hotel, it needs one parking spot for every room. The code only, only requires one parking spot for every three rooms. Where do the rest of the guests park? They can't park on the street, because that's illegal, you can't park on the street overnight. Um, some fear tactics say that that will slow growth, that's a flat-out false. Making changes to the high parking need businesses will not affect business development in Palmer. Thank you.
That's your time, thanks. Lori Copenberg?
Good evening, mayor and city council members. Um, mayor, will you put me on for the next, um, audience participation, too, I have two subjects to talk to tonight? I wanted to touch base first, because there's an action memorandum on the railroads. Um, as you know, the railroad actually did use to bring in a train, it came in for Colony Days, dropped three hundred people off, right in the middle of town, Colony Christmas. It was great for business, it resolved a lot of the parking issues. That train track can come back, but I'm going to go off of, um, there was a post on the Palmer Area News and Info Alaska Facebook page by a Palmer resident, this is what he said, "Just throwing this out here, out of curiosity, who would like to see the railroad tracks in Palmer removed, and the easement developed as open space and public parking, or should the tracks remain an eyesore that divides the town?" There were at least a hundred and one comments, and the overwhelming consensus was to leave the tracks alone. This shows that the majority of people want to keep the tracks, doesn't matter whether they live in the city or not. The tracks are an integral part of Palmer's history and should not be removed. There are many options for crossings to be fixed to mitigate any problems. There are railroad tracks that cross thousands of cities across the country, regardless if they are deadlined or not. One can look to the Cole Brookdale Railroad in Pennsylvania, how its community came together and raised funds through private donations, grants, and other fundraising events, and restored a part of their history, and created an economic boost to their town. It is possible today to bring the tracks back to Palmer. There were many of us that had meetings with the Alaska Railroad regarding bringing the tracks back, Denny Stotts, Jerry Keeling, Gray Gussie, Lamar Anderson, Jeff Johnson, Delana Johnson, myself, and many others. The railroad would not discount the community's desire to restore the tracks, if the community brings the money to the table. Today, we have a foundation called the Palmer Community Foundation. I think this would be a great project for this foundation to support. Any money spent on fixing the tracks should be done with the mindset of bringing the tracks back to working order, so no lowering of the grade should be carried out. I encourage council to keep our historic railroad tracks and find another solution to mitigate the unkept crossings until we succeed in returning the tracks to working order. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie Rutherford?
Mr. Mayor, members, council members, and citizens of Greater Palmer area. I'm here to speak about my friend Jim Cooper, whom I've had the pleasure of knowing for nearly thirty years. This is prompted by recent allegations that have been spread around social media, written by a pot-storing blogger with questionable credentials known for spreading lies and unfounded allegations. I first met Jim and his wife when they moved to Palmer in nineteen ninety-five and purchased Just So, a beloved local quilting and fabric store. I was the manager of the bank across the street, and he came in every day to do their banking and say hello. Since then, I've had the privilege of witnessing Jim's unwavering dedication to our community. I remember asking him at the time, why after traveling all over the country in your military service, did you choose Palmer? And he said, that's exactly why we chose Palmer, because when we came here, we knew from experience that this was the kind of place we would love to live. From the moment he and his wife arrived, they dove into community service with both feet. Jim has always been someone who leads by example, he and his wife served for many, many years on the Special Events Committee, and were instrumental in the early years of growing Colony Days and Colony Christmas into the very large events that they are right now. You would see them out there at six o'clock in the morning hanging quilts, and still out there late that night doing whatever needed to be done. He served as president of the Palmer Chamber of Commerce, and later earned the trust of our community enough to be elected mayor. These efforts are testament to his commitment to making Palmer a better place for all of us. Jim's life has been defined not only by his public service, but also by his personal resilience and kindness. After a distinguished twenty-six-year career in the Coast Guard, Jim became a small business owner, contributing to the local economy for twenty years. But beyond his professional accomplishments, his most admirable qualities have always been his kindness, empathy, and the deep respect he has shown to those around him. When Jim's wife faced the challenges of Parkinson's disease and later terminal cancer, he was her devoted caregiver. He supported her through years of difficult health challenges, always putting her needs above his own. This speaks volumes about Jim's character, his compassion, patience, and dedication to the ones he loves. Jim has always been respectful and kind to everyone he meets, particularly women. He has a daughter, granddaughters, and many longtime female friends who hold him in high regard. The recent descriptions of him as a bully are completely unfounded and far from the truth. He has been nothing but respectful, thoughtful, and a pillar of support for those around him. I'd also like to point out that the blogger of questionable credentials who made these accusations does not live in Alaska anymore, and therefore must have heard these things secondhand. So, I feel it's important to say, um, because some of these allegations claim to have taken place during executive session, that some council members may need to be reminded that executive sessions are privileged communication and legally cannot be disclosed. Anyone referring to them would be breaking the law, and anything that takes place within executive session should not be discussed with anyone outside of that session, except maybe legal counsel. People painting all the male council members with a broad brush are running the risk of slander and libel, just to stoke emotional us versus them reactions. I have no doubt that Jim's strength of character and his deep care for others will continue to guide him in his pursuits. Thank you.
Uh, Linda S.
My name is Linda Spohn. With the exception of Council Lady Hudson, I don't think I would trust any of you sitting up there as council members to hire another city manager, much less build a multimillion-dollar library. Why don't you work on a smaller project first, like getting the porn out of the library? As a council, you have put the people of Palmer at a public safety risk by cutting police, fire, and dispatchers. Water and wastewater employees keep leaving because they aren't paid as much as they can get elsewhere. Yet, the librarians got a raise despite the fact that they are putting vulgar perverse obscene books in the Palmer library. You and the council haven't even addressed the obscene book issue after it was brought to your attention many times and challenged by taxpayers. What makes you qualified to build a new big expensive library if you can't even manage your librarians or get the filthy smut removed? You made huge mistakes by hiring Mr. Jelly, but now you think you can just forget that, sweep it under the rug, move on, and build a big library. Word has it some of you were wanting to move in with these evil wicked librarians, so extra office space was inserted into the plans. And Mayor Carrington, you stated you weren't going to be bullied out of your position, yet your wife came to the last meeting and bullied the newest council member. Council Lady Hudson has absolutely nothing to do with this mess that you have made before she was elected. Now Council Hudson is trying to help us understand this catastrophe, and she gets yelled at by your wife. I for one appreciate her research, the questions she asks, and her efforts to remedy this situation. This council needs to learn to budget within the taxpayers' means, not spend it into debt. Now, some people learn by their mistakes and make wiser decisions thereafter. Others will never be trusted again. Thank you.
Jackie Goforth?
Mr. Mayor and city council, thank you for listening to me tonight. My name is Jackie Goforth. Wow, wow. Anybody who has read the article from Must Read Alaska has to be reeling and say, wow. Executive sessions are supposed to be private unless violations of the law occur. True. I have a girlfriend whose son was in trouble for domestic violence. It took five years to get in front of court, and for that five years, I heard all, all these stories from her about how horrible the ex-wife was, and how the ex-wife had done things. And yet, when we got to court, the victim read her victim's statement. She came from a different country, and she was told that he could kill her and bury her in the backyard, and nobody would find her. After listening to what she said, the judge gave this gentleman, my, my friend's son, time to defend himself, and he didn't say a word. And when he got done, the judge, he didn't say a word about it, all he said was victim, 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 me, victim, 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 me. When he got done, the judge said, "I gave you two minutes to address some heinous allegations, young man, and you didn't say anything to say that they didn't occur." So that means they did, in the law. If an allegation is not defended or addressed, then I, to me, it means it occurred. So now, what you've got is some allegations, people, and they're just allegations right now, but they're pretty heinous. And yet, I don't see the rebuttal. I like to see the rebuttal, because that's how it works. And if you don't have a rebuttal, then that means it took place. And that means it sounds very, very, very much like sexual verbal assault to me. And if I'd have been in here, I'd have picked up my phone and dialed nine-one-one, or gone and opened the door and had La Croix arrest some people. That's what I would have done. Thank God for the bravery of the women that were in here, thank God that we finally know the story. By the way, I've put in a FOIA for the police report, because I want to see the statements on this. And it doesn't matter how wonderful you've been for years, it doesn't. I got a brother who's in prison, I love him, but it doesn't matter how wonderful he was. Don't you get it? Trust, once lost, just like Linda just said, is almost impossible to get back. I'd trust you too, Graver, for the decisions on the library, you and Hudson, and for the new city manager. And why would you, why would you not investigate the new city manager? Why would you let Human Resources tell you not to investigate the new city manager when Human Resources works for you? I, I don't get it. I used, I, I don't get it, I don't get it. I live in the land of what in the heck is going on. Thank you.
That's your time. Sarah Jansen?
Hi, my name is Sarah Jansen, for those of you who don't know me. I have, um, let's see, been elected to the Borough Assembly twice, I worked for the city of Palmer, I worked for the Borough Assembly, and, uh, so I know a little bit about how this all works, and, you know, first of all, thanks for sitting where you are, because let's face it, it's not a fun job. When I was on the assembly, I had people writing letters to the editor about stuff that I didn't say, I didn't do, they never talked to me about it, but by God, they wrote that letter, and it was the truth. But that's not, that's not how it works. I'm here, it's hard not to comment to the, to the other people speaking, because when I worked for the city from two thousand and three to two thousand and eleven, we were still talking about the railroad tracks, so good luck with that one. Um, but I have known Jim Cooper, same, twenty-nine years that, um, that other... But I have known Jim Cooper same twenty-nine years that other people have known him. I have known Jim to be a stalwart supporter of his community, and it does matter what's happened in the last thirty years. I have never had the opportunity or been in a situation, and I have shared beers with Jim, I have shared tears with him, I have talked to him about everything on the face of the earth over those thirty years, and I have never heard him say one misogynistic thing. So that's the man that I know. And if, in fact, it means if we don't refute it, it means it's true, I don't think I agree with that, but I'm refuting that. I don't know what happened. I do know that it was an executive session. How word gets out after an executive session is for someone else to figure out, because I know that that's not how it's supposed to go. So that's what I'm here to do tonight, and the other thing is, you know, for a long time, people said Palmer was the city that succeeded in spite of its government, and that was when I was in the government. And that was always such a sad commentary, but, you know, but it's true, because we have such a cool little town here. And I really hope that whatever is going on in the back scenes of the council can get worked out. When your city manager comes to you and says, "Look, folks, you know, we have a morale problem. Twenty-seven percent vacancy rate. That's really hard to deliver services to your community if you don't have the people in place." So I would like to say in closing that I just really hope that you can find a way to work together. You know, I mean, if we can't do it on this level here, we are so, well, screwed, you know? I mean, really, and so I'm hopeful, and I thank you for your service, and I thank Jim Cooper for his service particularly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cindy Medbury. I was a Palmer resident. I live outside of Palmer right now, but I've known Jim twenty-nine years. And I read that article, and it was like, "This is not the person I know." And it's hard to follow Sarah and Debbie. I'm not a great public speaker, but I, like Sarah said, you guys have to work together, figure it out. It doesn't just hurt this little group, it hurts all of us. And then on the railroad tracks, bring the tracks back, man. I'm a small business owner, not in Palmer. I wish I was. Rent's too high. But I support Palmer, and I have since I moved here in '73. It's a great place to live, but you've got to wonder. Use your heads, be compassionate, and you do have to trust each other. And it's very hard to win trust back, but it can happen. That's it.
Thank you. Jenna Burna.
My name is Jenna Burney. I was born and raised here in Palmer. I've known, I wanted to talk about two things. First, I'll just mention Jim, and then I wanted to talk about the railroad tracks. I've known Jim since I was ten, and he's one of the best people I know, and he's there for you when you call on him. And I got myself involved with the board, and I don't know why I did that, but it's a mess everywhere, and I find myself wondering how the heck I'm going to get along with some of these people. But at the end of the day, we all love something that is the same, and if that one thing is Palmer, then find common ground in that. And to that mention, check out some of the YouTube videos of, like, train enthusiasts that have, like, millions and millions and millions of views, because these people buy out Alaska Railroad train tickets so that they can blog their journeys. And I would just love for Palmer to be, like, front and center of that. We could have an amazing Polar Express train. It would be, like, perfect. So anyway, if indeed the idea is to remove the tracks in order to repair what's happening over there, the city and all the public should really be aware of that before any decision is made. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Stacy Coghill, and I have been a Palmer resident for thirty-seven years, born right here in Palmer at the Valley Hospital. I was unaware of the removal of the tracks, that that was a proposition, and I am here to voice my opposition. I have spent my childhood watering Palmer's hanging flower baskets and countless hours of community service, and as a child, I have played on these tracks for endless hours of fun. Every year, I take my children to participate in the Palmer City Cleanup, and one of our top areas of focus is the tracks, because I love them, my kids love them, and they are very much a fundamental part of what makes Palmer Palmer. To remove them would be a tragedy and would take away the charm of Palmer that we have all grown to love. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for audience participation?
Hello, my name is Travis. I live in Palmer. I want to talk about the railroad tracks. I've spoken here to one of you guys a few times about having a train service for commuters going to and from Anchorage, and I think the location where the train depot is would fill in that, fill in that need, not just for commuters, but also for bringing in tourists. You've already got the, you already have a train depot at the fairgrounds that I believe could be, could be, could be used for commuting, for commuter services. And I think that, that for the, for the train, to remove the train tracks would be a travesty. I don't know if you know, you know, I have a train in theories, I love trains, and in Wasilla, they are restoring the steam engine number 557, which is a two, no, which is, yeah, which is a 280 steam engine. And it used to be in Anchorage at the park, and then they took it to Wasilla to have it restored. It's all funded by donations, but I envision that, once it gets up and running at Christmas time, we could, we could have our own Polar Express. It could go to and from the, from the train depot, and it's, and not just using any ordinary diesel electric locomotive, using an actual steam locomotive, using nothing more but water and coal. And I think it'll draw in people, not, not, not just from the state, but, but I envision from the country and from the world. So the two things I want to see is those, that crossing is abysmal, you know? I get whiplash every time I cross it, but I can't avoid, but I can't avoid it, because I can't avoid not crossing it, because it's just a faster way. But I would like to get, I would like to have that fixed. I could use it for, for Polar Express journeys, and also think about commuter, commuter, commuter trains. Yeah. So I think we need to get a lot of use out of those tracks. So that's, so that's what I envision. And also, there's also a track that goes into the branch line that goes into the, to the airport. I'd like to see that fixed, too, so that, you know, could be used for freight services again. I'd like to see trains, tracks being, being used again and not just be a relic from history. Thank you.
Okay. That's your time. All right. We'll close this public, public audience participation. And next, we move unfinished business up to this point. So next is a MatCom update from interim city manager Dementi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've met, I've met with MatCom a couple of times. On each meeting, Chief Shelton and the lead dispatcher were with us, meeting with, with different, different numbers of folks representing MatCom. The second time that we've met, we're in the middle of a negotiation period, so it's the details of which would not be really appropriate to discuss here tonight, but what I will share is that this is not a, this is not an instantaneous transition. It's, if this does, if this is something that we decide to pursue, it's a process. There's, there's a whole bunch of details that need to be worked out. There's, the configuration of our, of our cars will change, of our response vehicles. The configuration of the police station will change. There's going to be network issues. We're going to have the city of Palmer network alongside the city of Wasilla network in the police station. There's going to be, there's going to be proof of service. We're going to have to transition for a day for twenty-four hours and then come back to where we are. It's going to be back and forth until we can prove that, that we can really make this transition. Putting a timeline on it from just the little bit that I've seen, I mean, if we rushed it, we could probably get it done in three to four months. I think it's realistically, you're looking at six to eight months possibly, and Chief may have a different opinion on that than I do, but this is, it's a transition. It's not something we're going to do instantaneously. And that's pretty much what I have to report tonight. Chief, is there anything else that you would like to add to that?
Does council have any comments or questions? Councilmember Hudson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first question to ask is, I was just confused, looking back in all of this, I just, I guess I must have missed the directive from council to initiate conversating with MatCom for negotiation. So, Mr. Mayor, if you could please tell me when council asked for that to start happening? Thank you.
Well, the part I recall is getting a message that MatCom had called and asked for someone to call back, so that's when I did that with, yes?
I think I could partially answer that. It was my understanding that that was council's directive for the, for the city manager to do. I may have misunderstood something that maybe was directed towards the previous city manager and something that was already underway.
Okay. Councilmember Hudson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, in an email, it said, that was given to all of us in a FOIA request for a special meeting. It says, "Jelly said I need to get behind him or leave. He ordered me not to have conversations with any members of council regarding this issue. At the end of the conversation, he told me he talked to two of the senior members of the council and has their support to discuss with MatCom." So I was just wondering if I could get an answer about who those two council members were, or again, who on this council approved negotiations to start with MatCom. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Well, I don't know. I know Mr. Jelly had mentioned that he and the chief had talked about MatCom and that he was going to explore the idea, so that's what I know.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Can I ask our interim city manager, can you tell me who was at the first meeting that you guys had with MatCom, please?
That'd be myself, Chief Shelton, Ed Whitney-Don, our lead dispatcher.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I was asking specifically on the other side, representing the city of Wasilla and MatCom.
There were several. There was the, Wasilla organizes a little bit differently, so it's, Wasilla's mayor was there, Wasilla's city administrator was there, there was the chief of police, there was a human resources, and there were three folks representing MatCom directly. I don't know their, their specific roles at MatCom.
Councilmember Hudson.
Yes, thank you. And then, did you get a rough estimate from them about what the price we're looking at for negotiation is?
We did get a rough price, but I don't think it's appropriate to talk about it this time, just because it's in the middle of negotiation, and we're also, there's, there's a number of services that are still up in the air, so I don't think that's an appropriate amount to talk about at this time.
Councilmember Alcantara.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, John. Yeah, Wasilla does things a lot differently than Palmer, certainly. They have a high-paid mayor and a high-paid city administrator, so it is, it is done differently. But I think, looking at the crystal ball where we're going possibly tonight or on December 3rd, we're talking a lot about reinstating dispatchers, making our dispatch center our 9G base hole. I think we need to have a kind of a cease and desist or a cooling-off period on the whole MatCom thing, because we're not going to approve $390,000 potentially in dispatchers and then talk about spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to join a system eleven or twelve miles away, because somebody had meetings two months ago or, or six months ago, or whenever they were. So I did, I realize you kind of inherited the thing, so I mean, I'll keep my, my comments to what happened in the past, but I think a, a cooling-off period with MatCom and, more importantly, putting our, our dispatch back together again, if things proceed the way I hope they do. If not, then I guess we'll take, take another look at that down the road, but it's, it's nothing I think we should be continuing to discuss at this point.
Councilmember Best.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question to the interim city manager is, there's a lot of confusion of what negotiating in this context really means, because to some, negotiating means is a foregone conclusion, and you're just finalizing the details. And in my opinion, we're in our budgetary process right now. We have to see all aspects of our budget. The, the dispatch is a part of the police department's budget and part of our budget, and it's good for us to understand what our actual internal costs are and what a potential outsourced cost might be for us to be able to balance between the two of needs and desires and wants. It might be something that, yes, we might see it as a financial burden, but after we have the discussion at the council and with the public, maybe that's a burden that we are willing to accept as a city to provide a service. I get that. So I want to make sure that we understand that when we utilize terms of negotiating the contract, it's so that the administration can bring back to us, you know what, there's going to be a give and take within this content, within this contract. We're going to, we're going to offer some of our services, or people, or equipment, or if we do continue to stay with our dispatchers in-house, what does that cost? And we have to really have all this data before us, before we can make a true financial decision on this. So I'm not willing to say, "Let's just stop," because that's just burying our head in the sand, and then what might pop up later, we don't know, because we haven't asked the hard questions. So I encourage the city manager to continue going forward with the discussions, and ultimately, that data will come before us, come before the public, and be part of the public process. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Tudor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I'm copying on myself here. I just wanted to say that, you know, I appreciate you giving us this report. I know it's a little difficult with all that's going on, and I just want to say that there is a lot of opportunities out there for our own dispatch center. There's a lot of opportunities that we could utilize, both with the borough, and I know there's like an E-911 service tax that we all pay. And one of the things that Mr. Jelly had brought up is he said, you know, maybe we're in double tax. That's something that we should look at. There's a lot of avenues that, as a council, we can look at to see, how can we strengthen our dispatch, and how can we provide these services outward? Because it could definitely be a good opportunity for the city to be able to not just restore dispatch- to be able to not just restore our dispatch center to where it was, but also to strengthen it and make it even better. So there's a lot of opportunities that we have that I think we need to be open to. Thank you.
Okay. And I'd just like to say, the one, the one phone call I had where I asked Jeannie Davis to be in with me, MatCom had contacted us and a lot of that conversation was they're looking at hardware upgrades and they're trying to figure out if they're going to spend whatever it was, one, $2 million on hardware upgrades, how many dispatch centers that, you know, stations they need was a big question. So they were trying to figure out where we're at. And we're saying, well, we don't know where we're at. What kind of money are you talking about? Not much, didn't get much details out of it. But that was part of their motivation for trying to understand if we're involved or not. Counsel member Hudson.
Yes, thank you. I guess I just want to clear the air on where we're at with them. We signed a contract in 2019 that took 10 weeks for MatCom and the City of Wasilla and the city council of Palmer to agree to that the City of Wasilla, just, just for the fire department, that Palmer is secondary, that's in this contract. And it also says even to change this contract would take 180 days of written notice, which I do not believe that we have before we pass the budget. I don't believe there's 180 days left for that. So just in keeping with our contract, just for Palmer, you know, for 9G dispatch to just be secondary, we would be breaking the contract with them, with our fire department if we went ahead and decided to go about that change. So I'm not sure if, you know, if that was considered. And also, so did you receive, Mr. John, did you receive a number from them exactly of how much they were talking for our budget for a year?
And again, this is, it's, it's, like I said, it's negotiating. It's not appropriate to bring up at this time because it's not, it's not a final number. There's a number of things that we could request of them, they could request of us, that could change it. So it's very, it's a super preliminary time to be, to be tossing numbers around at this point.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Counsel member Hudson.
Yeah, thank you. I just believe that, you know, being transparent with the city right now and everything that's going on is, is really the best way to go about this. And the city can't know that the council is making an educated decision if MatCom has asked and the City of Wasilla mayor has asked us not to, asked, you know, people not to disclose the number. So from my investigative work, it looks like it'd be about $730,000 a year with a 5% annual increase, which means that 9G base costs us about $310,000 more a year. And that's before we have any federal funding or before we're able to bring in anybody or expand. So I believe this entire conversation about MatCom is only providing us one option to consider and what can happen with 9G base. And this was manufactured by the former city manager and encouraged by people on this council. This is limiting of a conversation. If council wants to consider 9G base, then it needs to be an in-depth conversation and it needs to include every variable regarding dispatch to be presented to this council, including options to expand and grow. We should not be forced as a council to only review one option and we need to consider every single contract that we have signed with MatCom and the Palmer 9G base before we go ahead with that. Thank you.
Counsel member Alcantara.
Yeah, I just want to associate myself with those previous comments just because we're not in a place to get the information we need in the next, before December 15th or before the end of this fiscal year. Just the time, the time is ticking and running out. And to be honest, Mr. D'Menti, it needs to be, I mean, I'd love it if it was yourself as a city manager into the future, but it needs to be something the next person we hire has to wrap their arms and brains around. Because you talk about changing vehicles, changing radios, changing this and that. But we're talking costs that are going to escalate very, very quickly. I mean, I ran 911 dispatch in the Kenai Peninsula Borough way back before technology gave us all the wonderful things we have now. But from 97 to 2000 and just the negotiations between central emergency services, City of Soldatna, the state troopers, just the amount of, our own E-911 board, we had a borough E-911 board. There's just so many variables that it's unfair to you in a, in an interim capacity to say, hey, wrestle this alligator. It's just not ready now. And I think the reality is, we need to put it on the back burner until we get folks in place and also have those discussions. If those discussions take 10 weeks, 10 months, so be it. We, we need to get our house in order and our dispatch center in order with the staffing that we need. And then worry in 2025 and probably in 2026 about how it, how it integrates with a dispatch center, you know, obviously several miles away. So that's my two cents worth.
Counsel member Hudson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there a time for us to bring up maybe a council, you know, a council vote or an action that the council can vote to cease and desist on these interactions with MatCom until a permanent city manager is in place and we have an HR in place, please?
Second. Are you making that move? Or asking for support? Can I second that?
So that was a motion. Is there any discussion from the council? Deputy Mayor Tudor.
Yeah, I think it makes sense to have that fall on the shoulders of, of the, you know, more permanent city manager. I don't think that it's appropriate for interim city manager to be trying to deal with this. So I'm in support of that.
Any other discussion? So could you read the, of the motion? What was the actual motion? Counsel member Hudson.
For the City of Palmer to, and specifically the city manager, to cease and desist communications with MatCom until a permanent city manager and HR is in place. Postpone and cease and desist communication, yes. But I think it would be smart that every person working within the city postpone their MatCom conversations right now. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, yes?
I think it'd be appropriate to postpone. I think not having conversations with MatCom, I think we'd still want to be able to communicate with them, but, but to not maybe, if the council wishes maybe not further negotiate the transfer, if that's.
Counsel member Hudson.
Can I ask what your purpose would be in continuing any communication with them right now if our intention is not to discuss this until we have an HR and a permanent city manager in place?
Well, we still have a contract with them through the fire department. And there, there are needs, there are reasons to communicate with them outside of furthering this negotiation.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, counsel member Hudson.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't clarify that well enough. To cease and desist and to put off all communications regarding negotiations with our 9G base and our Palmer Police Department moving to MatCom. Thank you.
Okay. And was that, counsel member Graver, is that, you approve the language change? Okay, any other discussion, comments about that with the council? Okay. Madam Clerk, if you could call the floor, please.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Counsel member Cooper?
Yes.
Counsel member Best?
No.
Counsel member Alcantara?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
No.
Counsel member Hudson?
Yes.
Counsel member Graver?
Yes.
Next is Action Number 24-059, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with HDL Engineering Consultants in an amount not to exceed $37,505 for final design and bidding assistance for Fireweed Avenue and Colony Way Intersection Improvements Project. That was postponed from our 10/22 meeting. Do we have a motion on the floor?
You do.
Okay. So this is back on the table with a motion. Do we need an update from the manager or?
Yes, please.
Okay. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Billifer, could we ask you for an update, please?
Mr. Mayor, council members, Jude Billifer, your Public Works Director. So you had asked, I think, three meetings ago, what public participation was done. I believe that is in your packet that covers the two meetings and the questionnaires that were done. That was conducted by community development. Again, just to recap, this was brought to us as a safety concern. We are fully aware of the desires and wants of trains returning to Palmer. This is an effort to make that specific crossing safe. It does not mean by doing this that trains would not come back to Palmer. And as mentioned, the Alaska Railroad cannot run on the current tracks. It is physically impossible. So again, this was brought to us as a safety concern. We initiated it and that's where we're at.
Counsel member Hudson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Billifer, for being here today. A quick question. I think the council, we had requested an estimate for just like filling in that area again. And I just don't see that in the packet. So I was wondering if you had a chance to, to look into that and to review that before today's meeting?
I did. And we could fill in right there. But that has been done, as was presented to me by the public works staff who has been here, the members who have been here for over 15 years. It's been done about a dozen times and it lasts about six months. It is not very expensive. So again, the last time that it was done, that was shared with me was about five years ago. And it lasted, as I said, about six months. And it was, the cost was not much. What was shared with me, I did not see the paperwork, but it was under $1,000.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, one more question?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Billifer. My next question is, is have you guys, I know you guys have looked into the Alaska Railroad and what their stipulations are for coming back on the tracks. Have you done the same with the 557 regarding the steam mention or just the Alaska Railroad?
Just Alaska Railroad.
Okay. Is, is that something that we could maybe as a council, a couple of us or something, could we make a meeting to have them come out sometime, even include you and maybe our interim city manager to discuss that and see if that's an option on the current tracks that are there and what that would look like for our city?
Well, we, we could certainly be part of that. I don't know where the train would go because the tracks are non-functioning due to overgrowth and everything else south of the Fireweed Ave crossing area. The tracks past that, I believe it's commercial, are fully embedded. Those would have to be dug up. And then again, past that, going towards SBS is again, fully overgrown. I, that's all I know from, I did a limited review of that area. I walked the tracks as best I could. I don't know what the cost would be to do that. Again, it may be something we're volunteers, but again, I'm, we did not look at that part. We focused on solely when the safety aspect was brought to us.
Okay, thank you so much. And, Mr. Mayor?
Counsel member Hudson.
I know that when the interim, I'm sorry, when the previous former city manager was here, we had a meeting, I believe it was Councilman Tudor, we had a meeting scheduled with the 557. And I'm not sure what happened, but the, the meeting was canceled. And so I'm wondering if maybe we can reach out to them and get in a meeting with them and see if that's something that, you know, we could do is just meet with them regarding the steam mention again, since that meeting was canceled.
I'd like to hear from the other council members.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Counsel member Alcantara.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jude, not a real question for you, just some pontification about how the romance and wonder of railroads is so great. You know, my father, my father was a firefighter in the Alaska Railroad in the early 1950s. So there's a lot of, and my mother is still alive. But my mom took a tremendous spill about 13 years ago, broke a bunch of ribs and hasn't had the same quality of life from 81 to 94 that she had previous to that. I don't want to see anybody get hurt ever on these abhorrent railroad crossings that we have. It seems to me we've taken a lot of time on this. I'm not opposed to meetings and further developments and things happening. I just don't want it to delay, delay, delay until I hear the next person out of the Pioneer Home or something else that, that broke their arm because they've, you know, fell over in their wheelchair at the railroad tracks or whatever. They're just not in good shape. I would love, and I've thought about it since the 70s, of the thought of being able to commute to Anchorage in a railroad, you know, of course, back in the day, reading a newspaper, having a cup of coffee. I guess now I'd be looking at an iPad and having a cup of coffee and spilling all over this. But the fact is, we can't control that. Alaska Railroad controls it. And they're going to never do anything to make something happen beyond the state fairgrounds that we have now. So this, I would love to hang on to the romance. We're not going to lose, you know, engine number five. We're not going to lose any partial pieces of old, old track that doesn't work in this day and age. We're going to fix the intersections and take track out of that area. So it's been years and years and years, as was mentioned earlier, that they've talked about railroad crossings and other things. And I could go on for, you know, the rest of this evening about losing a niece and nephew to a truck-train collision and things that aren't, that's not going to happen in downtown Palmer. But the fact is, train tracks and, you know, people trying to negotiate wheelchairs against, across them are not in the best interest of Palmer anymore. And I feel, man, I wish things, you know, the steam 557, whether they're relocating to Wasilla, whatever they're doing, I wish things could be different. But I would really love to see us proceed with this $37,505 and see what kind of things we get to improve and make things safe for just a while, anyway. And thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I could just, and.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Billifer.
That is, that is our goal. This is not the step where removal of tracks would occur. And again, it is a very small section. It's right at Fireweed. We are not talking about any other crossings. It is just at Fireweed. So what this does, if you were to pass this, this authorizes me then to do further negotiation. But it's, $37,000 is a very good deal because I've, I've gone through this specific area with HDL to develop the design. And as you know, when I briefed earlier, it came to us as the safety issue because there are three crossings, all three are non-ADA compliant, all three. And so that was what started this whole conversation about, and then we got into, we had some information provided to us by the Pioneer Home about the number of accidents from folks at the Pioneer Home trying to navigate across just that section. Again, so I just want folks to understand how this came about and where the focus is. And that by you passing this, now this money was set aside two and a half years ago. This was initiated under manager Moosey. And we did, it took us that long, so the delay is my fault. But that was to engage the Alaska Railroad to make sure that we understood all the parameters that we would be working under in terms of dealing with the Alaska Railroad. And then any other aspects, again, walk the road. We've, I've done that with Alaska Railroad engineers. I have done that with our folks. I have done that with actual engineering firm members. Again, so the focus is very, very small. Again, if, if you were to consider this and pass this tonight, that would allow us to go out and get a potential design. Your final decision then, if you wanted to move forward, would be a couple of months down the road. And then I had heard someone mention, you know, we could certainly have more, more public input. That's a new thing. We typically don't do public input, but we are happy to do that on our, our construction projects. You know, we advertise as we are required to by code. And then we do have two public meetings on it here. We don't have additional ones, but we are not averse to that at all. Again, my, I'm trying not to advocate one way or the other. My goal is to do the will of the council and the people. So please don't take any of my. So please don't take any of my comments as advocating one way or another right now. Except in the event, in this aspect, I would request you to pass this only because then I can present to you much more detailed information. Again, your call, and we'll keep doing what we're doing, which is sanding and plowing at the moment.
Deputy Mayor Tudor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a question. If memory serves, when you met with us last time about this, you made a comment about the railroad track crossings and how they're not, not up to code for what Alaska Railroad requires. I mean, there's no, there's not, I don't know what the term is, but the flashing lights and-
Positive train control.
Positive train control.
Yes.
If, and in your communication with Alaska Railroad, were they stating that if we, if the train were to come back into Palmer, what, what steps do they list that would have to be done? And what steps would have to be paid for by the city of Palmer to get that done? I'm just trying to get a good grasp on it.
Certainly. Great question. And as, as presented to me by the Alaska Railroad, so the tracks would have to be upgraded to Alaska Railroad standards from the Alaska Fairgrounds depot area to however far we envisioned an Alaska train coming. The trains run on different poundage tracks. So these tracks that are currently from the Alaska Fair, or state fairgrounds through Palmer are on a grade and a poundage of rail that the Alaska Railroad does not and will not operate their trains. So the starting point is, every bit of that would have to be redone. The initial estimate for just the track and just the ballast underneath was $3.7 million that was given to me by the Alaska Railroad. That did not include the positive train control aspects, which would be crossing guard, arms, flashing lights, those things. I do not have a good estimate on those. Again, our focus was strictly on the one crossing. It has also been determined that where some of the track currently is, is not situated directly over the ballast when the train tracks were put in decades ago. It has shifted. So what that means, why that's important, is the alignment of the train tracks could be skewed, and could be skewed 10, 15 feet. What does that mean for right-of-way? As most of you know, the Alaska Railroad right-of-way is gigantic through, it's 200 feet. 100 feet either side, center line of the rail line. I've had this conversation with some of our, our folks in the audience that that right-of-way almost comes up to the front door of some of our downtown businesses. People don't realize that until you pull the plats and see where it is. But that's, that, beside the point. $3.7 million for the tracks and ballast, I do not have a good estimate. I have seen some that was about $1.1 million for the positive control, positive train control aspect, which is crossing guard, arms, lights, things like that. I can certainly reach out for more information like that, but what I did receive from the Alaska Railroad is, at this point in time, there are no plans for the Alaska Railroad to spend any money to update the track. That's what was presented to me. Take it however you want, but that's what was given to me. And we also had an email saying that they have no objection if we were to fix that intersection, which has been mentioned, what we would do to make this not only ADA compliant, but other safety aspects. As I mentioned, their cars have slid through that different aspect and slid over into Jen's Kies Automotive. You are smart enough to realize, I think they're probably going way too fast. But the point is, there is a hill there. So as mentioned, just as a refresher, the, the tracks would be cut there, the grade in that one location, the concept is right now, would be lowered, they'd be back-sloped there, the rest of the tracks would not be touched. So, you know, the ambiance, if you will, during Friday flings and anything else that's specific to Palmer would remain there. What you would do is, again, just work on that area right there. Couple other things that I believe, I had a couple councilmembers mention to me before, I said this about two years ago, was bringing power and some other things around the corner to extend, like how we do with Christmas decorations. I know that's not the driving force, but just to share. So there's a lot of considerations that were brought to us. Hopefully that helps clarify a little bit.
Okay. Councilmember Hudson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I guess I just, I'm just trying to clarify, so. So do we know for sure that the steam engine couldn't come in on the current, could not come in on the current tracks that are there right now just to the depot?
I do not know the answer to that. I, my gut would tell me, what little I know, and again, please, I'm gonna caveat this, I am not familiar with the weights and operating limits of that specific engine. I would think it would be able to, but again, that'd be a determination for a railroad engineer to make. I don't have that information.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, thank you. And then, my next question is, is if you pull those part of the tracks out and you downgrade the road in that specific area, if there was a historical railroad foundation that wanted to bring in cars to be there for us to be able to run small businesses out of, or just to bring in anything historical into that area, it seems then that there would be no tracks to hook a track car up to, then pull it into the area, then we would be looking at a more expensive venture because that, that part of the tracks would be missing, so they wouldn't have a complete pull-through. So then we would have to, we wouldn't really ever be able to do something like that. And I think that's something else that I personally can see as a concern, is not only are we cutting out the ability to ever even consider this steam engine, but a lot of members of the community have put a lot of time and their money and resources into restoring. We're taking away that opportunity from them in a way for downgrading the road, and then also we're taking away the opportunity to bring in more historical features before we go about a said project like this.
You are correct. Once those rails right there would be cut, that would prevent use of those specific rails right there. What the Alaska Railroad has shared with us, and this is based on the current signed permit between the city of Palmer and the Alaska Railroad, is any modifications that we would do, we would have to bring the tracks back to the current situation that they are right now, if the Alaska Railroad was to determine they wanted to come back. Now, we have talked about what we would do, and the Alaska Railroad has said, yeah, if you, you leave it as is, we're gonna pull it all out anyways, which is what they would have to do.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Councilmember Hudson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just think, I just think it's very important for us to consider because, I mean, personally, if we did hear, just to my other councilmembers and to the community, if, if we did hear from the steam engine, if we did hear from the 557 and from the Alaska Railroad that there's no possibility that they ever would come into Palmer, it would also be a consideration, like I mentioned, for us to see if they have any restored locomotives or anything that could be brought in. I mean, I think it would make a really cute flower shop or another just small business there that probably wouldn't need much parking if it's in a, if it's in just a little train locomotive. So, and even just, you know, Friday fling, I know at the Fairbanks, the, the Park and Fairbanks, they have an old historical train that you can walk through and, and like, almost like a museum thing, and even that is just so cool. And I just would hate for us to cut off any ideas to fix a crossing. Maybe we haven't considered all of those avenues, but I do also understand that there's a con, safety concern that we need to consider, which is why I had asked for it to be brought forward, the pricing for us to fill that area. So thank you so much.
There was one other, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Bill if you're.
A consideration that was brought forward, again, this was probably two and a half years ago, was to actually block that section of fireweed off, Jersey barrier at closest to Jen's Kies, and then also at the other, at the east end, and so that it became a non-functioning section of road. We could look at that again, if that's the wishes of council. So then all traffic, instead of going there, would just route up and across Evergreen, which I do recall what we did is, we took three separate pieces of equipment, we took a loader, and timed it to see the difference. We took a regular, just a regular truck from Public Works, and then we took the garbage truck. And we timed those, and the average time distance, if you made it go like that, let's just say, instead of going straight across to Jen's Kies and then taking a left, or we used a left, versus going up and across Evergreen and coming down, it added 1 minute and 11 seconds. So, again, that was looked at, brought to us, and then we were told to focus on what I've presented to you now.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of notes of edification for those people who've been here a long time. In 2001, there was a, a railroad car that was up by Eagle Street, and obviously they couldn't bring the car across Blueberry because there's no tracks there. So we did have them removed, and they came in with a big crane, and they picked up the car, and they, they left. So, to, to bring in another car, if we had no tracks there, they could actually bring a car in by, by a crane and set it next to the depot or whatever. The other comment is, in passing, Terry, and I don't remember his last name, who's in charge of the 557 project, mentioned to me that they only have permission from the railroad to use the spur to the airport. They have no permission to come into, into town.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Bill if you're.
That permission is not the Alaska Railroad's to give.
Right.
And the reason I say that is, that spur road is owned by the city of Palmer.
Right.
The Alaska Railroad owns no part of that. Yes, they are responsible for train operations, but just so everyone knows, that rail spur from SBS to the airport is owned by the city of Palmer. Rail, bed, property, everything. And a lot of folks don't know that.
A little bit more specific, yes, it was from the, from the fairgrounds up to use the track.
Over from the fairgrounds to SBS?
Up to our tracks.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Councilmember Graver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for being here, Mr. Bill if you're. I guess I have several questions, just listening to the conversation. Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. Oh, that is louder, okay. I just have several questions regarding this conversation that I'm listening to. So, this here is just authorizing you to execute the contract and, and bid out the design.
Design.
Correct. So, so were we to approve this tonight, how long would it be until the actual construction or, you know, tear-down and construction of this?
That, that's not determined.
Okay.
So, if this were approved tonight, then HDL would have approximately two months, maybe three, to do the design. Once that design is done, that design would come with an in-depth cost analysis, at which time, obviously, I have to come back to council for appropriation of funds to do that for the construction part. Now, that could be, a perfect world is, we put construction projects out in January and February. If this design doesn't come back in until the end of February, my preference is not to put it out to construction if you were to authorize it until the following year. The reason being, when you put those construction projects like that out, the longer it takes to put them out, the less favorable competitiveness we have with getting a decent bid. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, if I may follow up.
Yes, continue.
So hearing that, my question is, maybe not to yourself, but to, I know, the manager or the mayor, if, if the council were to approve this tonight and then also request to meet with the 557 group, that might be considering the placement of some historical locomotives or other things there, using those tracks. If we were to approve this tonight, it would not keep them from moving forward with something before the actual construction and all that takes place? Is that correct?
No, it would not. The reason being is, we will not touch any aspect of those tracks-
Right.
-without council approval, which would be authorization for a construction project. The design will not do anything except present something on paper, and again, we will not touch them. I mean, maybe to fill in some holes if we can, but-
Sure.
Otherwise, we, we won't touch them.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Tudor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just want to go off of what Councilman Hudson was saying. I think those are good ideas about having trains, because I think, you know, ultimately, we need more touristy things here in Palmer. That's gonna help all of our businesses. And I, and when you're talking about that, I was thinking about down in Salatana, there's a place called Whistle Hill, and they actually have several kind of vintage Alaska Railroad trains that I believe, because there's, I didn't have any train tracks, I believe they craned them in. So that could always be something we can look at, you know, whether or not we have the tracks there. But, you know, overall, I'm in, I'm in favor of moving forward with getting this done because it's, it's a safety hazard. I mean, we've, we've heard for a long time about people falling on those train tracks, vehicle damage, and honestly, even $1,000 a year to fill them in until we get something, you know, firmly done, it's a lot cheaper than a lawsuit. So I would, you know, I would almost say just keep doing that at least for the time being until we get a direction one way or the other. Thank you.
Councilmember Hudson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would there be a way for us to, to add to, well, I guess, I could request to add it to the next agenda, or even tonight for us to vote to give, I guess, permission for them to be able to fill in that area while we're waiting to keep the public, you know, safe during this time of waiting to get reports back from the different companies and things like that?
Mr. Bill if you're.
Now is actually not a good time. The reason being, we use a heat bonding asphalt material, and if I were to put that down right now, it would last probably a week, if that. Good idea, just recognize the materials that we would use. Now's not the time to put them in.
Councilmember Graver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On that note, could we request that when you feel the time of year is right, that you come forward and, and request that from us?
We can, but in all honesty, we do that and have done that without your permission. I mean, if, if you want me to delay, to get, and I don't mean that in a bad, I can do that, but trust me, when we see things like potholes and things that need fixed, the crew is very, very good about being responsive. I can certainly let councilmembers know that, when we've done that, but we absolutely, we look at the temperatures, we look at the conditions, and then we act on them. We did not do, we did not do any filling this year, again, under the guidance of, of Mr. Moosey and working, that we thought this was going to advance sooner, and, and then Mr. Moosey left, and you have it now.
Thank you for the clarification.
And I, I think-
Mr. Bill if you're.
I've, I've mentioned to folks before what the cost would be to bring that crossing up to Alaska Railroad standards without removing the tracks. And that was, I do have that printed estimate from the Alaska Railroad engineers, and it was approximately $560,000 to bring it up to their standard without running one of their trains, so.
All right. Any other discussion from the council? So we ready to vote on Action Member Avenue number 24-059? Okay, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
No.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Alkantra?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
No.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
52.
Next is discussion of investigation of previous city manager interactions with city staff and city attorney postponed from the 10/22/24 meeting. This is, this is just a discussion, okay? So, is there any council that wants to comment or discuss? So is there any council that wants to comment or discuss? Councilman Best.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm still in belief that due to some of the allegations that have been made and potential lawsuits, that it's best for the City of Palmer to encourage an investigation of all aspects of the city's exposures so that we have the information in case any lawsuits come forward. We would have all the information and the investigation would already be done, and this would be done by an outside investigative source with subpoena power. That's still my intent.
Councilmember Hudson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I just wanted to clarify, since we don't have sponsor sheets, what two council members, or if it was the mayor, I don't think it was, our interim city manager, because when this started, he wasn't here, who brought this investigation forward originally onto our agenda?
I believe I was probably the one that suggested it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And what is the price that you're looking at this costing for this investigation? What is the price quote?
I don't think we have a quote. This was brought, you know, as a discussion point, and we haven't given, we haven't taken action or a vote on it yet.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, Councilmember Hudson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I've seen, you know, in the past with these things that have been brought forward, usually, there's more information, there's who we're wanting to invest or investigate, what their violations are, I guess, the reason or the scope of the investigation. I guess that's just not very clear. So what would be your reasoning behind asking for this investigation, Mr. Mayor?
I believe the whole situation with our previous city manager kind of unraveled, and so I was hoping that we could investigate what all happened, even if it was just looking at, you know, email traffic, et cetera, and what all he got into. And then, but the idea is to have discussion to see what the council would like to see. Councilmember Graver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I guess, hearing your thoughts on why you would like to have the investigation, I'm curious what you would do with that information, because there's no way for the city to move forward pressing charges against anything that comes up about the previous manager. And I think we can all see the effects of him being a manager on our city. We don't need an investigation to see what needs to be fixed or what needs to be worked on. We already see clearly the problems that caused, and I don't see a need for further investigation into someone when the results are already clear to see.
I guess I would disagree with that. Part of what I've seen in my mind is that we have a manager form of government, and with this latest situation, I'm wondering if we don't have enough checks and balances with our manager, and so I want to discover what, you know, where do we think things fell apart? You know, should there be some more, some more changes to our code, et cetera? That's, to me, that's part of what I am after. Councilmember Alcantara, oh, sorry, Councilmember Graver, follow up?
Thank you.
I suppose, then, I would like to hear your scope of the investigation, because it says on the agenda, interactions with city staff and city attorney. A lot of the issues that came forward that I saw were the previous city manager's interactions with members of the council or the mayor. That's what people seem to be concerned about, and that's what I'm concerned about. So can you get a little more detailed on the scope of this investigation as far as getting a little more detailed than just city staff and city attorney or interactions? I'm curious.
At least to me, it seemed that there was quite a few conflicts with, like, department heads and our city manager, as well as between the attorney and our city manager. And that's, to me, that's one of those things to try to unravel. You know, do we need to have clarifications in code, you know, as to, you know, how the city attorney works with or without the city manager, et cetera? I think, you know, those are all things that could be examined and try to figure out if we need to make some changes.
One more follow-up, if you don't mind.
Yes, Councilmember Graver.
Just, I would like to bring attention to the fact that the attorney is allowed to bring forward a concern that she has about a city staff member to the council, and that all the aspects of that, including the emails between her and the previous city manager, are out as, you know, public knowledge. And I don't believe there is anything else hidden with their interactions. To me, that was very clear how that went. I don't need an investigation to see what happened there. I'm, I guess, my biggest problem with this, the way it's stated on the agenda, is that it draws attention to the city attorney's character and the city staff's character, because they are the ones who brought forward the whistleblower concerns. And that is, that brings liability on the city, because those, if we were to investigate them, it is pretty obviously going to be seen as retaliation, in my mind, and I, you know, I know there are some lawsuits going on right now, and I believe that this would also interfere with those lawsuits and would cost the city a lot of money and would further the issues with staff retainment and hiring that we're having.
Councilmember Alcantara.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate those comments, for sure. And I just want to kind of point out that we went for years, and they either hit it really well or there were no problems, because we went for years with the city manager, who was here from 2020 to 24, 2024, before Mr. Jelly came to town for 52 days and seemed to, you know, try to blow up our little town with a lot of comments, with a lot of actions, and a lot of things that were poorly performed. So kind of go back to, you know, to moan in Lion King and say, you know, let's put our past behind us. And I think picking at the scab of what occurred has no value at all. If we want to have a big, robust discussion in 2025 about, do we want to change to a strong mayor form of government? Do we want to get rid of a city manager type of government? Do we want to have discussions about what happens or what's better about having a city manager versus having a strong mayor or take a page out of Wassila's book and have both a strong mayor and an administrator? We can have those discussions in the future. We don't need this investigation in order to move that ball down the field. But we really, I think, we have our chief back, we have our city attorney back, we've kind of undone some of the damage that was done in the 52 days. Now, let's not, you know, pick at scabs, tilt at windmills, whatever idiom you want to use, just to prolong things. I mean, I don't, I don't see any value in this. If we want to have a bigger, robust discussion about how to move forward and go back to city manager code and say, did we change it in 2012? Did we change it in 98? Did we change it in 2015? We can have that kind of in-depth analysis of what city code is, but just talking about what happened between a 52-day city manager that we paid dearly to get rid of and our own city staff that we had for, as we just pointed out tonight, 25 years, and one's been here, and another one's been here several years, three years at least, we don't need this, and I think it's just taken up a lot of time, and I'm ready to vote to squash this, hopefully, for the rest of time. Thank you.
Councilmember Best.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hopefully, we can all agree that things went awry. If we don't try to understand where they went wrong, then we're going to be forcing ourselves to be exposed to potentially having the same problems over and over again. If we are going to be forthright and having a little foresight to try to understand where we might have had issues, where we as a council maybe did something wrong, mayor did something wrong, the manager did something wrong, staff did something wrong, until we have it looked at independently, we will not know what problems or pitfalls that we maybe just barely skated through or got by. But in my opinion, for us to not have it looked at is, I mean, if you had an engineering project and something went wrong and you just decided to say, we're just not going to make a mistake again, that makes no sense. You have to understand where the problems were to be able to make solutions and make better judgments next time. If we are able to prove out that our employees did nothing wrong, the mayor did nothing wrong, the council did nothing wrong, that should bode well, that should bode really well for us and really help us to heal the wounds of everybody guessing and throwing disparaging remarks at each other about what they perceive was somebody's involvement in something. Let's have it looked at, let's have an open and honest discussion about what happened, and let's try to move forward. That's how we, how we get, bring closure to this. It's not just burying our head in the sand and saying, well, it was just that one guy. The one guy does not create that much strife within a city. We've got people that are all of a sudden casting dispersions.
This is the council's time to talk, so it's listen. Councilmember Best.
Anyhow, that was, that was my point, that it needs to be investigated, it needs to be looked at, and then we can put aside all these accusations that we have going on against people, and we can have an understanding of the situation.
Councilmember Hudson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to point out that in code, for us to do an investigation, the former city manager, while he was hired with us, while we were in relationship with him, working, we would have then followed what Councilwoman Graver and Councilman Tudor brought forward, which was we would have then placed him on admin leave, then we would have had an investigator come in at that time, and the investigator would have investigated his interactions with city staff and with, that would have included everything that you're asking for. And then that person would have come back to us at that time and said, you have cause for termination or you do not. Then at that time, we would have gone into executive session, most likely, and we would have then at that point decided if we were going to use his original contract to terminate him for cause based on that investigation, and also other members of the city, if there was inappropriate interactions going on. Or we would have chosen to terminate him and pay him, or he would have chosen then to resign without payment. So because of the overlay that was brought in, that now, number one, states in the overlay that if we do an investigation and Steven Jelly is contacted, he continues to be paid from the city, which was in what was, what you had brought forward, and then, so we're going to continue paying him if he's contacted. And then also, we can't hold him, we can't hold him liable for anything that's brought forward. So you're asking us to investigate the city attorney because she brought forward a statement telling you, whoa, hey, we have some allegations and some lawsuits pending regarding this gentleman, we need to stop and look into them. What Councilwoman Graver and Councilman Tudor asked us to do was to discuss his employment and termination for cause, not just to let him resign and walk away with money. So that was not followed, what Councilwoman Graver originally had requested. And so to now want to investigate the whistleblowers is, doesn't follow city code and doesn't also follow the contract that the city attorney and us signed with her, saying that she was to come forward, she was following her contract, and now other legal services are being sought after because some people on this dais didn't like what the city attorney brought forward. And that's really concerning to me. So if we are going to do an investigation on anything at this point, I think that it should be maybe even about executive session and what happened in there, and to make parameters regarding the executive session to protect the city and the safety of the council members that are behind this dais, Mr. Mayor. And the treatment of women that were in the room. Putting the city attorney in the back corner with no microphone so we can't hear her? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. But putting the city attorney in the back corner of the room so that we can't hear her and we can't talk to our city attorney, and allowing Steven Jelly to yell over her when we're asking for her legal advice, that was wildly inappropriate, Mr. Mayor. So respectfully, I can't agree to any investigation that you want to bring forward regarding that city attorney and the disrespect and the way that she was treated in that room. Thank you.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm torn between an investigation and, you know, just kind of moving forward. October 9th, to me, was the last day. You know, we learned a lot from that point, but as Councilman Alcantara and the city manager have so eloquently stated, you know, we need to put the past behind us, we need to, we need to move forward. I think the city needs to be proactive and not reactive. We are reacting to stuff that's happened in the past, but we need to, there are so many things that are on our plate that we need to get done. We need to be proactive, get a new city manager, move forward, and put all this stuff behind us. Thank you.
Councilmember Graver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to say that I just wanted to follow up Councilwoman Hudson's remarks and reply to Councilwoman to my right, or, sorry, Councilwoman to my right. Sorry about that. I can, I can give you a list of things we need to start with to fix what happened. I don't need an investigation. We need to hire a reputable HR manager and a reputable manager. We need to do our own homework for looking up background checks, even a simple Google search. We need to know the code so we know when it's being broken. We need to record our executive sessions. We need to use our own legal counsel. We need to let the entire council be a part of making decisions, especially entering into contracts and taking outside legal counsel, and we need to investigate before firing. And that's just the shortlist that I thought of in a few minutes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think that also, following up with what Councilwoman Graver said, I think that's a great point. I tried to start just this last week, or maybe it was the end of last week, to make this a more transparent process for the council members in requesting the applicant's names for city manager, and I was told that I would not be receiving them. And that was something that we were going to be receiving at the dais after an HR was hired. So my hands are kind of tied with that, but I just think that it would be great for us as a council to, you know, really look into those things that Councilwoman Graver mentioned. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Tudor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just want to echo some of the comments that have been made. I think they were said very eloquently by Councilman Cooper, especially about, you know, and Councilman Alcantara. This was a dark time in our, in our city's history. It was not a good experience. There was a lot of things going on, a lot of emotion. It was, it was a difficult situation. And I'm not going to really touch... And I'm not going to really touch on the executive session comment because I don't, you know, I'm not fully sure what I can say when I can't, so I'm just going to be quiet on that front. But it was heated, and, you know, I think ultimately the underlying cause of all this, we understand, was, you know, we were directed to not look up the applicants, and many of us at the time were like, that's a little odd, but it was the direction. And I think, you know, solving that is going to really do a lot to protect the city in the future against having this again, and I think we did learn a lot of really good lessons about process, and a lot of this needs to come into play with having us have, you know, education done annually to understand Open Meetings Act, executive session, and, you know, Roberts was awarded in city code. You know, having that done every year, I think especially in October after we get new council members, would be really good for us because we all need a refresher on that all the time. It's just one of those things, you know, you could do the same job over and over again, but it's just nice to have somebody come in and kind of give you a reminder on something that you might have missed. I think that's really going to do a lot as well to help. Because, I mean, ultimately, our former government, which is kind of a manager-led government, is, I think, kind of goes against the grain of what a lot of people expect, a lot of people are used to, you know, kind of having the mayor and the city council, and we're different from that. And so I think it'd also be a good reminder for us here on this dais as to far as what we can and can't do in relation to how we interact with the city manager, and this will help just fortify our position better in the future. Thank you.
All right. So do you want to take any action on this discussion?
I move to table this discussion forever.
Mr. Mayor, I also agree, I move to vote to cease and desist this.
Excuse me, she made a motion, so we'll look at her second.
Okay, second.
All right. Any discussion on the motion for tabling this discussion? I think indefinitely would be the corrector.
Postponing indefinitely.
Postponing indefinitely, okay. Does that sound okay to move from the motion?
That's acceptable, thank you.
As well as the second? Okay. Any discussion on that? Okay. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
No.
Councilmember Alcantara?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Six one, motion passes.
Okay, next we have public hearings, but I think we might want to take a seven-minute break or so.
I was like, who do I talk to?
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Is there another path I can steal? Can I steal it? There you go.
Here, that goes with them.
I got him. There he is. No.
That probably happens a lot. They were going to pick me like we're talking. Yeah. It's just, I mean, wouldn't it change a lot if you just don't? I don't know.
All right. We'll come back from our break, and I should probably comment to people that we actually have a time limit. Our code says we can't go past 11:00. Unless we vote, but, you know, we can. All right, next we have public hearings. So first public hearing is Resolution Number 24-040, authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of $129,840 in grant funds from the state of Alaska's 2022 State and Local Cyber Security Grant Program. So we'll open audience participation, anyone wishing to speak to this resolution can do so.
You said audience participation, it's public hearing?
Public hearing, excuse me. That's why someone probably brought this. This is a public hearing. So no one come forward, we'll close the public hearing for Resolution Number 24-040. What's the wishes of the council? Approved?
Second.
Second. Do we want any more explanation from the manager, or are we ready to vote on this? Okay, we're ready to vote. What, oh, sorry.
Oh, I was just saying in my microphone, I'm sorry, I think we're ready to vote, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Alcantara?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Next is Resolution Number 25-041, a resolution of the Palmer City Council identifying the city of Palmer's 2025 capital project priorities for state, federal, and other interested parties funding. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to Resolution Number 25-041. Okay? We will close the public hearing, what's the wishes of the council?
Moved and seconded.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion from the council? Councilman Alcantara?
Yeah, I just wanted to give kudos to Mr. DiMente and just kind of the real streamlined process. I know we talked about the budget process, about the handheld radios and other things, but it's just, you know, there are some big dollar items in there, obviously with the library and water system expansion, but it's a very refined, brief list, and I appreciate the work that went into it to keep it that way. Thank you.
Councilmember Hudson?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is there any other comments from council? Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Alcantara?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
You need us?
All right, next is our experiment where we're doing a public hearing for Resolutions 25-001, 2, 3, 4, and 5. We'll open the public hearing, it's essentially for our 25 budget.
Hello, City Council, my name is Jackie Goforth. If this is to add the 2.5% cost of living adjustment to your employees, I am highly for that, please, please. I just found out yesterday that Wassila gave, added a new position to MatCom of Assistant Supervisor with a $50,000 increase to her salary. So in order to keep the best employees here, you can't just have a wonderful city to work for, you also have to pay them a commensurate amount that they can make in other places. So please, please pass the cola. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the pay plan, or the fee schedule, or the fine schedule, or the five-year CIP, or the budget?
Good evening, my name is Cindy Hudgens. I'm still questioning the whole budget thing. I don't know what has been added back in, and I mean, I hear that they've added back in for the dispatch, three more positions for the dispatch, and that's good, because in my opinion, and I know that's just a small opinion, we shouldn't have anything left in there at all. I was even surprised they were still talking about MatCom, which thank you very much to the ones that voted to table that indefinitely. Why are we sticking to a budget that was set by a con man? I'm really confused by that. Why any changes that he made to our city are we sticking by? Those should just be, no, and that goes with the budget too. And yeah, our employees need to get a raise, you can't just keep them at the same thing for years and years on end. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward and state your name.
Hi, my name is Stilce Sarah Janson, and, you know, it's interesting to listen to the stuff about the dispatch, because, yeah, we were dealing with that 20 years ago too. And one of the problems is that we don't pay enough, and we watch, I think this is still probably true, you know, we train our police officers, but we don't pay them enough, so then they go work for, you know, Wassila or Soldatna or, you know, whomever. And so I would, unless we're in it, the city is in a position to to pay commensurate salaries to what folks at MatCom get, you know what, we're always going to have that problem. Because no matter how loyal an employee is, we all work for money. And if you can make more money down the road, chances are you're going to take that. And so I encourage you to consider that, not only during the budget, but also during the MatCom discussions that may or may not come forth. And as to not understanding or not wanting this budget to go forward, the problem is, of course, is you don't have any choice, right? Because you have to pass it by December. So unless you sit and, you know, make a whole new budget, you're kind of, you know, you have to do what, you have to make do with what you have this year. So I support the raises, but I also think you need to look at it as an overall picture. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I think if you are going to add a million dollars to the library budget, yes, you need to pay your employees first. Thank you.
Is there anyone else for the public hearing on the budget? Okay, we will close the public hearing. So where we're at is we have the budget that was presented to us back in October. And I think there was some amendments that we'd asked for that have come forth. So if we want to make amendments, now would be the time.
First thing you need to do is you'll need to start with this item, the first item, 25-001, and move to adopt.
We didn't have a motion to adopt before?
Not yet, no.
Okay. So starting with Resolution Number 25-001, 2025 Employee Pay Plan, do we have a motion to adopt?
To move.
Second?
Yep.
Okay. So now we could make an amendment to it now that it's been moved. Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to clarify, the pay plan that's in here currently in our packet, that is without the COLA? Or does that include the amendment for the COLA? Just wanted to clarify.
Mr. Manager?
The pay plan that's included in the packet is, does not reflect the 2.5% because it has not been added as an amendment yet.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, I would just, yeah, I would like to move for the, to amend the pay plan on Resolution 25-001 to include a 2.5% COLA as in our proposed amendment in our packet.
Second?
Okay, moved and seconded. Councilman Alcantara?
Thank you, certainly no opposition to that. But do the general fund amounts and then the amounts from the enterprise funds need to be read into the record separately? Or is this document that was handed to us sufficient? Because if I'm understanding it right, Mr. City Manager, the 169,000 is just for the 2.5% and the much smaller figures are for the enterprise funds, correct?
That is correct. So, Councilman Alcantara, would you like to read them into the record?
I guess I'll ask to amend the motion to include a 2.5% COLA to the 2025 City of Palmer Pay Plan and the amount of $169,000 Water Sewer Fund and the amount of $16,223 Airport Fund and the amount of $4,496 Solid Waste Fund, the amount of $3,960, 3960, Police Services Fund, $4,390, and Police Narcotics Fund, $2,000. Thank you.
Nicely done. And thank you, that is a good point, especially for those that may be listening or watching. All right, any discussion on that? Are we ready to vote for, would this be?
Amendment number one.
Amendment number one? Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Alcantara?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay. So that has been amended. Okay, is there any other amendments to the pay plan? I don't see any for that one before us. All right, if we're ready to vote, let's adopt, I guess is the term for the budget. Resolution Number 25-001, 2025 Employee Pay Plan, as amended. Could you call the roll, please, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Alcantara?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
All right. Next is Resolution Number 25-002, 2025 Fee Schedule. We need a motion to adopt.
Second?
So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or amendments from the council? I believe we had some tentative discussions, but those are the kinds of things we can, you know, the manager meets with staff and comes up with some different numbers. We could do an amendment sometime during the year. Are we ready to vote to adopt this? Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Alcantara?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Unanimous?
All right, next is Resolution Number 25-003, 2025 Fine Schedule. We need a motion to adopt.
Second?
Is there any discussion or amendments for the fine schedule? All right. I believe we may be ready to vote to adopt Resolution Number 25-003. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Alcantara?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Okay. Next is Resolution Number 25-004, 2025 Five-Year CIP. We need a motion to adopt.
To move?
Mr.?
Is there a second? Second? Yes, Council, Councilmember Hudson?
I was under the impression that we were going to, we were going to take out the $90,000 for the airport paving. Are we going to amend that in this?
Councilwoman Graver?
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilwoman, wow, sorry. Talking to myself over here, okay. Under page 2 of 4, it says Airport Capital Fund from General Fund, and it's in parentheses, meaning... Okay, I was just making sure because in this that was presented in the resolution, it wasn't removed. So I just wanted to make sure that we weren't passing without removing or amending this first.
Okay, thank you.
I think it says, okay.
Okay.
All right, so do we have an amendment?
That's what I'm trying to say.
For this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Best?
It's under Fund 30 Airport Paving Design. Remove from the budget $90,000, please.
I know, but we need to amend it just like we... Yeah.
So are we moving as amended on this sheet, this entire?
Mr. Mayor, if I may clarify, it...
Okay. Should we get the manager or maybe Gina to give us a better understanding of what we're looking at?
Okay, it's, right now, the capital improvement plan is, sits in front of you as presented. It needs to be amended to, we've got that packet. It needs to be amended to reflect the amendments that we've spoken about, if council chooses to do so.
Okay.
As presented?
As presented, okay. Councilmember Hudson?
Move to amend the resolution to the...
Proposed amendment?
Proposed amendment, thank you. Sorry.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Councilman Alcantara, would you like to help us read this into the record?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, yeah, I would, actually, because I think the publics are like, hey, what are they adding to this thing? So just so you know, and City Manager can chime in if I miss on any of them, but we're adding three public works vehicles to the tune of $93,000. Somehow Jude has a special secret way to get F-350s for $31,000 apiece. We're adding air packs for new fire engine for $60,000. We're adding one police vehicle, fully equipped, radios and everything for $80,000. And as I mentioned earlier, we're removing $90,000 in airport paving design from the budget. Is that fairly accurate there, Mr. City Manager? Or did I miss a part?
Yes, sir, that's accurate. And that also leaves $305,356 unallocated capital.
Very important part to point out, thank you.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Oh, and these, the items listed on the lower part are budgeted already, so. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Councilmember Hudson?
As far as what I was seeing is that there was about $99,000 left after the paving was removed. And so I was wondering if we could discuss that to see if there was a way for us to add in one more of the police vehicles or putting money aside for four different projects before we move forward with that?
I guess what I'd like to do is maybe vote on this amendment, and then we can double-check with the manager and Gina as far as where we're standing with numbers.
Okay, so we would have just added in later? Is that...
Right, we could.
We're in the middle of voting on one amendment, and so we should go through that before we amend anything else.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So are we, are we good to vote on this amendment to 004, the CIP? Okay, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll for the amendment?
Correct. Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Alcantara?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Okay, so that's amended the CIP list. And Mr. Manager, do you or Gina kind of have a tracking number of where we're at?
So where we're at, you know, I'm going to backtrack a little bit just so we can catch up from the beginning here. So in the general fund, in all of our funds, we had, between the general fund and the capital fund, we had $1,377,000 unallocated funding. Now, we're, part of that funding, and even backing up further, I'm sorry, I'm screwing this up. The closing balance for the unallocated general fund at the end of 2024 is 6,600, is projected to be $6,633,555. 10% of that, by code, goes into the capital fund. So that's a total of $663,355. The proposed budget in front of you had the $90,000 to the airport and $125,000 for fire fleet replacement already, already in there, which left a, which left an unallocated balance of $448,356. With the amendments that have just been made, there has still been allocated $663,356 to the capital fund, of which now there's $305,356, $356 that are unallocated. And it's your choice whether you choose to allocate them or you can choose to leave them unallocated. Does that answer the question?
I believe so. Are we following that? So at the moment, there would be $305,356 unallocated in the capital improvements fund, which we can either leave that or if we want to allocate. Councilmember Hudson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I guess I would just like for there to be some kind of discussion regarding the police vehicles. If we are doing the three public works vehicles and we're only doing one of the police cars, I think it would be wise of us to consider adding one more to that to try and help keep the police car rotation the way that we've had it. Thank you.
Councilmember Alcantara?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'll bite. So Chief Sheldon came and discussed with us the ability to just have one police cruiser, I think, a new one as of right now. I'm not against the public safety aspect of adding a second $80,000 police vehicle, but I also think holding money, some money in advance, I mean, we're looking forward to a new Congress. We're looking forward to a new legislative session. And we have money for library kind of in our wish list, but we also have the voter's approval to fund a library in a bond package. And those bond payments will be, you know, north of $305,000 a year. So I'm, I'm a little bit, I think we haven't gotten yet to the operating part we're hoping to add in. I think we've added in quite a bit, even though we had a fairly decent surplus, but I'm just a little nervous about going there when it didn't seem the need was immediate. And I think it's something we can address a few months down the road. That's just my opinion.
Councilmember Tudor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
It's all good. Yeah, they, you know, I think it is important that we follow the police rotation. I was curious when the last car, the age of last police vehicle that we have is that would be replaced, or how many, how much mileage it has. Because really, for me, I would really rather keep the money in the bank for use to buy for next year a new grader. Because I think that as someone who drives around a lot on these roads, we could use a new grader as well. But I would like to hear from the, from the City Manager about how old the last police car was.
To my understanding, Chief Sheldon, we've got three new police cars that have just been purchased and we're finalizing. Is that correct? You could, you could come on up and...
That is correct. And as far as, were you wanting to know the age of the ones that we're getting rid of?
Yeah, either the age or the mileage, you know, you know, just to make sure they're not going to be like a bunch of jalopies driving around. We'll make sure you get some decent cars, you know.
I don't have our vehicle fleet list with us right now. I'm going to think Luke has that. And if it's your permission, I'd bring him forward.
Just to confirm, I'm Luke Zipski with PD, if you didn't know. So the question was, what is our oldest vehicle right now?
Yeah, on the vehicle rotation, I was trying to find out, you know, what the age of that vehicle is that would be rotated out if we were to get another police vehicle for you?
So the ones that are being rotated out now are from 2016. So those are eight years well past our normal replacement. Those are the ones that are being replaced now. And even if you order the cars at the beginning of the year, which we try and do, it takes a long time for them to get outfitted of those three vehicles that we just got ordered. Only one of them has hit the streets, and that was just last week. And that was last year. It took almost a whole year to get that whole process done. Two are still in the shop getting worked on. So it takes even longer. So that eight-year car is going to be a nine-year car before he actually gets it. Those cars have about 80...
Those cars have about 80,000 to 90,000 miles. Some of them are a little bit older. We still have some spare cars that are from 2013 with about a buck twenty on them, so. And we still need those spares, because, you know, inevitably, something's going to go wrong with the car, and then we need something to replace it with. But we're about, we're about eight, nine years out.
May I do a follow-up, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, good, continue.
How, I mean, are the vehicles giving you trouble already? Are there more maintenance being required on them that's obviously increased the operational cost?
For sure the older ones. Where we had one that just went with, went out with a transmission last year. We're going to end up decommissioning that, because it's not worth the cost to fix that. The vehicle itself isn't. And that was a 2014, I believe, or 2013. The current ones that are being replaced now all have their own little mechanical issues, yes, but they're still serviceable. They still have some life left in them.
And please excuse my ignorance, what is a normal age or mileage of a police vehicle in Alaska before they're rotated out as far as, you know? I understand it's probably different in certain areas, but let's say Anchorage or Faribings or Wasilla or Soldatna, you know?
Yeah, so the standard for that is five years, 100,000 miles is the time that they're taken out of regular daily use, and then they're typically moved into a, as a spare vehicle. So when a trooper or another officer, their daily driver needs to go in for a repair or new tires or oil change, they'll grab one of those spares and then utilize it. It functions in that capacity for about two years, and then goes to the auction block or surplus, otherwise surplus. If I may, I wanted to talk a little bit about last council meeting and my ask for one versus three is we can have a brand-new fleet of vehicles, but if the streets aren't plowed, they do, it's no good. And so, I know Public Works could really use a new grader. And so kind of my thought on that was, you know, if we can get by without a couple, couple police vehicles this year, and we can put that money towards a grader, it sounds like they've got an opportunity. Hopefully, it still stands, Jude, I don't know, to be able to get one at a, at today's price, which tomorrow is going to be a lot more expensive, the way things are going. If we can put that money and maybe get that ordered, that would be, that would be great. I know it takes a long time for us to be able to get a grader, but that was kind of my thought process behind that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See, Don? Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Hudson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I guess the question for the council is, is there, or the mayor, or the city manager, or Gina? I'm not really sure. Is there some place where we could pull that extra funding for the grader? For the, would it be another 100,000? Is that what we're looking at for the grader? It's four?
Mr. Manager?
The current quote is 420, and it's, and you can hold it unallocated and just not spend it as well. You don't necessarily, nobody's going to touch that money except for you.
Councilmember Hudson?
Thank you. So is there, again, if we did decide to go forward with the grader, is there, are we able to pull that? Are we able to pull the extra funding out of savings? Or would we, would we want to wait until next year then, when again, it would be more expensive? Because we don't have the full funding there to consider the grader, if I'm understanding that correctly. Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a kind of follow-up question for City Manager. What, like, what's the inflation on the graders? If we were to wait till next year, I mean, are they, had they been going up by, you know, $20,000 a year? Or is it more like, ah, 10 bucks more expensive? I was just kind of curious what that is.
That's a question for the subject matter expert here.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Smee.
It's associated with expert, so.
Mr. Billifer?
It fluctuates, and we cannot predict it. So the 420, I think it's 427,000 that we were given a quote for, unfortunately, we won't get it for that now either. I checked, that was a grader that was held for us at the Port of Seattle, and it got sold. That being said, I can get an updated quote. It's, my guess is it would probably be about 10,000 to 12,000 more. But our goal is, we make calls with all of our contacts to see if there is a grader that someone ordered somewhere and is sitting. And that's how, thanks to you, we got that snow blower last year. We found a snow blower sitting in the Port of Seattle, and were able to action it and get it up here to the tune of $40,000 less than what it would have cost normally. That's our goal. So again, to answer the question, 10,000 to 15,000 more. But without me actually speaking to the various reps in the Seattle area and in here, here in Alaska, I don't know off the top of my head, because it does change dramatically. And I don't know what the tariff increase that the Anchorage Assembly just passed will do to that sort of thing, because those come in, they don't come over the road. And I believe that goes into effect January 1st.
Councilmember Alcantra?
Oh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thanks, Jude. Jude, are you ever able to get with the state the way you do with the Ford F-350 pickup trucks? You ever to get with the state and the state buys?
I do.
Six pieces of equipment at the same time, or?
Yes, sir.
15 pieces of equipment?
We have been able, though, by reaching out to pay less than the current state government contract. We've been very, very fortunate. That does not happen all the time.
Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor. Jude, I think I asked you this question earlier on this year. Do you ever look to DRMO or DLA to see if they have, you know, excess surplus vehicles?
We have. Our challenge is that we have, half of our fleet is older than what they sell. So I'm operating 1997 vehicles, 99 vehicles, 2001 vehicles, which are usually older than what they have. So we just instituted, as you know, the last three years of trying to mirror how the police department has done, and they've done a great job cycling out vehicles, because for so long, it just, it came to a head for us when I think, as I've mentioned to you at the last meeting, I was inspecting vehicles and saw that we didn't have floorboards in two of our vehicles. Probably not the way we want to operate. So yes, we have, but it's not reasonable. I would prefer not to take a, you know, a 20-year-old vehicle to replace a 30-year-old vehicle. It's what I'd rather not do.
Thank you, sir. All right, so we have amended the CIP plan. Are we ready to vote to adopt that at this point? Okay, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll?
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Alcantra?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Are you unanimous?
All right. Next is Resolution Number 25-005, the 2025 budget, basically the operating budget. We have a motion to adopt.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion, questions, or amendments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yes, Councilman Alcantra?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So now we're on the operating budget piece. This is important to folks to point out. Very public safety-focused additions. And so people were asking earlier about the budget that we inherited a couple of months ago, and you've been listening to some of the add-ons that we are making to a budget. And so, the proposed amendment is for addition for a fully-staffed dispatch operation, three full-time positions in the amount of $390,471. Addition to police operating budget travel and training, $27,500. Addition to police operating budget office equipment, $29,000. Addition to police operating budget for overtime, $40,500. Addition of our opiate task force officer, total of $160,000. Addition to fire operating budget overtime, training, and equipment for $38,000. And addition to revenue line item fire contract services, the amount of $24,700. I think it's important to public, for me to point out that...
Is that a motion to amend?
Oh, motion to amend those, with those numbers, thank you. Bring a second for that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Now you can talk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thanks. So excited about this fantastic addition. But as they always say, back in the old days, a cynic is just a skeptic with the facts. But I was pretty skeptical about $130,000 dispatch personnel on average. As you could read, there's three additions for the amount of $390,000. Seemed impossible from my past knowledge of 911 and just from budgets in general. But I was enlightened to the fact that our health insurance piece is about $43,000 per year per employee. So that is a, that is a big, a big piece of a fringe benefit package that probably a lot of other municipalities offer. I'm sure Wasilla offers even a more gold-plated one. But, but that's, that's a piece that our 77 employees get that some folks may not get out there in other parts of the working world. So I was definitely educated by Ms. Davis and our City Manager to why that number was as high as it was, because just that at first, when you just look at the salary of a dispatcher and you say, how on earth does this get to 130,000? They proved to me how it got to 130,000. And some of those numbers may have slight wiggle room in them, but not a whole bunch. It just depends on if the dispatcher's, a single person, has a family, what part of, what part of the copay premium they're paying. But there wasn't a lot of wiggle room in those numbers. And so I wanted to point out, because I know many meetings ago, I said, that's just not possible. And it is possible. So, and the same could be said with our task force officer. I mean, for anybody who thinks that we're paying anybody 160 grand a year, I need to realize that that's a package of insurance. It's a package of multitude of things that, that makes that number go to 160. So anyway, I think they've done, our City Manager, John's done good work presenting this to us. The police and Police Chief Sheldon and Fire Chief Prevost acting have done a great job presenting their numbers, and I hope everybody will support this amendment. Thank you.
Any other discussion about the amendment? All right, Madam Clerk, if you could call a roll for the amendment.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Alcantra?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Okay. So that, okay, now that comes back to the actual amended Resolution 25-005, correct? Any more discussion on that? Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, after those amendments are coming in, I'd just like to review the numbers to so council and the public's aware. Again, going back to the budget as presented, the budget as presented had a 1.3, $1,377,474 budget surplus. We can, that's an unallocated budget surplus. Of that, $929,118 come from the unallocated general fund. So with these amendments, these amendments total $829,771, leaving a surplus in the general fund of $99,347.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Councilmember Alcantra?
Yeah, I think it's important to point out, as the City Manager did earlier, that's the $99,347 surplus for this year. Our surplus overall is still right around $6 million of surplus of funds we have in savings. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Are we ready to vote on Resolution 25-005 as amended? All right, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Alcantra?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Unanimous?
All right. Next, we have action memorandum. Action memorandum, actually, do we want to combine these first two? If we combine action memorandum number 24-062, directing City Manager to notify the State of Alaska of the City Council's statement of non-objection of the Connoisseur Lounge Retail Marijuana Store License 27522, and number 24-063, directing City Manager to notify the State of Alaska of the City Council's statement of non-objection of Feather &amp; Flowers Restaurant Eating Place License Number 6029. Do we have a motion?
To move.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Do we have any questions or comments? Councilman Best?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have we received any communication through the clerk's office as to anybody objecting to this?
No, we have not.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Alcantra?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Unanimous?
All right, next is action memorandum number 24-061, authorizing the City Manager to enter into a one-year agreement to purchase healthcare insurance coverage with Primera through the city's health insurance broker, USI, for insurance coverage for the period of January 1 to December 31, 2025. What's the wishes of the council?
Would you approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a second. Do we have any questions or comments? Councilmember Alcantra?
Just a comment, as I looked for it, I know I saw it earlier. Is the, is the premium increase, if I recall, is somewhere in the 3% to 3.5% range? It didn't sound as important as I thought it might be. Was that, are my numbers anywhere close?
Mr. Manager?
3.2% increase.
Thank you.
Okay. And that was negotiated down, just to put a plug in for our broker, negotiated down from an 8.2% increase.
Very good. Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I asked this question before. Is this through AML, or have we looked at AML at all and see how they rate, or do they not compare?
Mr. Manager?
Can I ask, yes, Ms. Davis to come up, please?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, that we have not looked at AML's options as far as health insurance. We have a agreement with USI, I think one more additional year. Our current insurance brokerage that has provided us coverage through Premier of the Crossbow Shield. And as John stated, we were pretty lucky to get, it was actually like a 4.2% increase, but we were able to get a 1% discount if we signed early the document. And, I mean, compared to a lot of other places in Alaska, you know, the increases were closer to 12% or 15%.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
I just wanted, just wanted to give kudos to all of you that worked on this as well. I mean, this was, I mean, you brought it down from a 14.3% increase on dental down to, you know, 3.2. That's really impressive. You guys did the public a good service, thank you.
Yeah, USI is a great...
Yeah, USI, it is a great job for us.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Alcantra?
Uh, yeah, not really a question for Gina, but just kind of more of a comment for Councilwoman Cooper, that, I, I don't think that's a bad thought process, anyway, to look into it, AML, JIA, their joint insurance agency, has to offer. Uh, historically, they've had a difficult time, uh, keeping pace with some of these other groups, but it doesn't mean that when we're done with this contract in a year, that they're, they couldn't be, as some of you are going to that conference, uh, for many more days than I'll be able to attend. But, I think it's definitely worth bringing up to their executive director and others that, hey, what are the, what are the numbers looking like? And, you know, maybe bringing in what our numbers look like, just so you have some kind of, uh, thought process to go through. And if I'm able to track them down on the Thursday, Friday that I'm there, I'll try to do the same. So it's a good, it's a good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if I remember right, um, at the executive board meeting, the, the AML, JIA, that they were in process of conjoining that group with another group, and which will give them a little bit more purchasing power, apparently, so, um, it'd be interesting to have a little more conversation with them.
All right. Okay, uh, deputy, sorry. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Alcantra?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Uh, next is, uh, action memorandum number 24-064, authorizing the city manager to spend an amount not to exceed $196,882 in sub-awards from the COSUP grant for the third year of the grant. What's the wishes of the council?
Moved to approve.
Seconded.
All right. We have any comments or questions from council? Okay. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Alcantra?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Okay, um, next, we're on to new business. Information memorandum number 24-001, City of Palmer Planning and Zoning Review and Recommendation of Palmer Municipal Code 17.89, referred by the city council. Um, so I believe there's information in the packet, this is where, um, we had referred the specific code about short-term rentals to the planning, zoning, to kind of examine and, uh, review for us. Did, uh, did we have any questions of the manager or staff? Don't see any, okay. Uh, next is information memorandum number 24-002, City of Palmer Planning and Zoning Review of 17.64.050, referred by city council at the June 20th, 2024 Joint City Council and Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. There is, uh, quite a few pages in here. Do we have any questions of the manager and, and/or staff about what they're suggesting at this point? Mr. Manager, you want to give us an overview?
Yes, sir, I'd like to invite Mr. Hanson up to the, to the mic to give us an overview of, of this, of the second one, please.
Want to give us a concise?
Yeah, I will. Yeah, so you guys, at our June 20th joint P&amp;Z council meeting, asked the Planning and Zoning Commission to, um, look at parking in the downtown area. Let me go get my parking notes real quick.
Okay. I think the microphone still feels working.
So you guys, uh, at the June 20th meeting, asked, uh, Planning and Zoning to create an action plan, uh, to improve parking and pedestrian activities in the central business district. That was the motion that was, uh, moved by Mr. Tudor and seconded and passed. Um, so the planning and zoning did review it at two meetings, okay? Um, they were given a num, a bunch of information, they were given your request, they were given really the outline of the central business district, what, what it was established for, uh, what it's about. The central business district is unique, uh, because it is an area that has smaller lots in downtown Palmer with public parking, both on-street and in, in, uh, parking lot. And so, you know, we evaluated the, the big picture, what downtowns mean to communities, what downtown means to, um, you know, the local businesses, and we really felt like, the commission felt like, that this was something that really needed to be a community-based decision on the direction of where the parking ordinance goes. And, the idea is, is, in the resolution, you see their recommendation was to, um, allow the city to issue an RFP for, to hire a consultant to be, to have a, a number of community meetings, and then look at parking at holistic level in downtown Palmer, and come up with a, a plan that not only suits the loc, the, the businesses now, but suits the future of where Palmer is gon, needs to go in the future. And so, um, that's their recommendation, and I think if you want to, uh, take them up on that, I think the most appropriate thing would be to ask the city manager to bring back an AM, uh, stating that. At that point, we could outline, um, exactly what the scope of work is for the, um, RFP, as well as funding, which there is funding in, in the current capital budget that we could use to accommodate that, um, so it wouldn't be any new sources of money that needs to be appropriated. And, um, you know, get more of a timeframe for doing that. So, uh, this is an information memorandum to get you guys up to date on the work that the P&amp;Z has done, and wait for further direction from you.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question, uh, on, in the design schematics, are any, um, I, I didn't, didn't see it, but is there any place for hookups for power? I mean, one thing that I noticed when we have events like, you know, Colony Days or Friday Fling's, you know, all the vendors have to run their generators. It's pretty loud, a lot of, you know, and, and I was just wondering, is, is there an option here to have, um, you know, electrical hookups for vendors who may be?
You know, the, the scope of the RFP has never been developed, so...
Okay.
...you, we can figure out exactly what needs to be included in something that, if that's the direction you want to go. Um, I, I do think you need to take a, a, you know, a long-term view of downtown Palmer and, and decide, you know, the, those kind of things that you want.
Mm-hmm.
So, those could be considered.
Thank you.
Councilmember Graver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, um, within this, the scope of this, uh, I had requested that, um, we clarify the wording in Palmer Municipal Code, uh, 17.64.050, um, talking about the on-street parking and, um, what counts as parking and what doesn't, when it's marked yellow or, uh, marked prohibited. Um, is that still something we can...
Absolutely. I think it's completely all in the mix.
Okay, so that's part of this? Okay, thank you, I just wanted to make sure, because I know that's come up a few times, so.
Yeah, I think anything that relates to pedestrian and parking in downtown is completely on the table.
Okay.
And additionally, you know, there will be public meetings, so there will be feedback from public during those meetings where, you know, direction to whatever, um, consultant is hired, to be able to work on something that is generated from the community.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just want to say thank you for working so hard on this. This is a very well, putting together the presentation, oh, you all put a lot of work and effort into this, and it shows. Thank you.
You can thank the planning and zoning, they worked.
Yes, they did an excellent job, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Manager, you were just looking, what, maybe give us a direction to, um, to help, uh, the, um, so far, the RFP, which we're about to...
Yes, sir.
So direct? Am I allowed to say that?
Second.
Second. Um, is that clear up, or did you have a...
I think we have enough information to move forward with.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it was moved to, for the action memorandum to, uh, to direct us to move forward. All right. Okay, any more discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Alcantra?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Okay. Uh, record of items placed on the table?
Document from Janet Kincaid.
Okay. Uh, next is audience participation. Uh, we will open audience participation, we have Lori Kopenberg.
How is that?
I'll add you.
Good evening, mayor and council members, my name is Lori Kopenberg. You guys actually just passed something that I was going to speak to, but that's okay. I think it's important that, some will tell you that parking isn't a problem in Palmer. That's a typical reply when their businesses and homes are not impacted. Developers will tell you it's not a problem, they just want tenants in their space, regardless of whether they provide enough parking, putting the burden of their parking needs on other property owners and businesses. Others will tell you that increasing parking requirements will kill development and commerce in our vibrant business community. Parking is a problem, created mostly by the high parking demand businesses, which are restaurants, bars, breweries and bakeries. As stated earlier, a real use number for parking spaces is one parking space per 1.66 seats for food and drinking establishments, and one parking space for each hotel room. This helps cover the number of parking needed for employees. For eating and drinking establishments, a fair compromise is to require one parking space for every three seats, or one parking space for 100 square feet, whichever is greater, and for hotels, one parking space for one room is necessary. Since off-site parking and shared parking is often cited as an option to relieve parking problems, council should review PMC 1764-035, off-site parking, and PMC 1764-041, shared use parking, to fully understand the requirements placed on the property owner of the off-site or shared parking property. I know of no property owner that would be willing to encumber through a recorded deed their private investment for the benefit of another business. Remember, the off-site or shared use parking has to follow the life of the business, whether it's sold or not, until that use is no longer there, unless, and also unless the business that needs the parking is able to meet its own needs pursuant to code. This is an unrealistic solution to Palmer's parking problem. Developers will not be hampered, nor will our vibrant business community be quashed because council makes the right decision to increase the current code for high parking businesses to meet a realistic demand for their parking needs. Your City Depot, our community center, would be highly impacted, you would devastate it. It would no longer be a use for our benefit for the community if a private business gets to use that for their parking. And the city has no business paying for private businesses' parking. It costs us a lot of money to maintain our own parking properties. And by having the community many, meetings and having this, um, uh, if, if you, if you go forward with this, um, uh, study, they're going to come back, they're going to tell you, eliminate parking minimums or maximums, put on-street parking meters, and then time-limited meters. They'll say, get a parking garage, the city doesn't have money to pay for it, they'll talk about mo, multimodal transportation, that's never going to happen in Palmer. Um, and it's not up to the community, even though their input is important, their decisions should not make the decision for a private property owner and the business. Their input is important, but it's the private property owners and businesses that are impacted the most. And if you make a town that makes it hard to park, they will go somewhere else. So, this is reality, we sit there, we watch it every single day. Again, we're the ones that know the process and what happens. So, the city has a big decision to make and should make the right decision and fix the code, it's an easy fix.
Cindy Hudgens?
First off, I'd like to say thank you for the changes to the budget. It makes me feel a little bit better. Um, I think these, these changes are so much more important than millions of dollars being spent on a library. That's just the way I feel. And, that will affect my property taxes too, because I live in city limits. Um, next, I'm, I am so bothered. Um, everybody wants to sweep this, well, some want to sweep this stuff under the rug and move on, but there were people greatly affected by that executive meeting. And I'd like to say, kudos to you, um, Councilmember Cooper, for having four women come up and speak for you, attest to your wonderful character and how respectful you are of women. Well, what, these people that came up and spoke were not here that night, didn't come back into this chamber after a three-hour executive meeting and feel what it was like in here, and what these women looked like. They have been abused, and it's sickening. Abused by some of our own council members that claim to be so respectful of women. And then the mayor's wife comes and chews out one of those council members. That was totally uncalled for, totally. I mean, something went down in here, whether these women believe it or not, that caused two members of this council to go and do police reports. Oh my goodness. How can that happen in Palmer? Isn't, aren't we the best of Alaska? Shameful, absolutely shameful. And yet, we have members up here that want to just brush it under the rug and move on and pretend like it didn't happen, when I can see still the people that are affected. I can see it in these two women. I could see it in the city attorney, that, and when she sat there, the meeting after. You should be ashamed of yourselves. And then you sit up there all high and mighty, it's sickening. And then I speak for a lot of people. Anyway, I had to get that off my chest because it makes me sick.
You're on the list.
Okay. Um, good evening, um, I'm still talking about parking. Um, my concern was, at the planning and zoning, they were afraid to require a restaurant to provide their own parking. What is wrong with a business providing their own parking? Um, we have a code that, that provides, and the example I've always used is Feather &amp; Flower, 'cause it's easy. I took pictures and I showed you. They had 21 cars in front of their business, but the code only requires them to have seven. So that's 14 cars on the street blocking the residential homes and the businesses next door. And, and you have a small business next door, and you can't get in, your customers can't park, you don't have customers. And, I am a tenant, I, I'm a landlord, but I do care about the parking, but some of the other developers don't in Palmer. But believe me, the tenants that are inside the Kozlowski Center, they really care about parking. And, a lot of this came up with the barbecue guy wanting to go in across the street. He has a building that has two parking spaces, two parking spaces on, on city property, he provides none of his own, no handicap parking, and he's planning a restaurant that's going to bring 80 cars, 80 cars to South Alaska Street, that is going to decimate the depot. The depot will be worthless as a city asset. And, planning and zoning was too afraid to talk about it. They wouldn't talk about that a restaurant shouldn't get a waiver. Why would you give a waiver when that means you're going to block the guy next door? Because that building doesn't provide parking. Public parking? The city doesn't need to spend money on public parking. The architect, Gary Wolf, said, "If you do a, a one-way down Colony Way and do angle parking, that will do nothing for the restaurants that have the overflow." People from Turkey Red, or not Turkey Red, Feather &amp; Flower... People from Turkey Red, or not Turkey Red, Feather and Flower, they're not going to park across from the hotel and walk to Feather and Flower. They're not going to park there and walk to the Ale House. So why would the city spend $500,000 on parking spaces that are not going to help the problem? The problem is simple. You just require the person to have parking spaces. You require it for homes. You require it for the lots. That's the reason you won't let somebody on a 20,000-square-foot lot have an Airbnb, because of parking. It's crazy that you won't even talk about it. They won't talk about the seating, outdoor seating, fixing the wording. Brad, at the community development at the barbecue place, he's counting a place that's yellow. You legally can't park there. So he's telling the new owner that he can count two places that don't exist because you can't park there. And right now, that person's planning more and more seats. He doesn't care what the code is. Why shitty? There's no check and balances. So anyway, thank you very much for your time again.
Linda?
Quite some time ago, I was in the Palmer Library, when it was still over here before it collapsed, and I picked out a few books and I was on my way to the counter. And in front of the counter was a lower table with a featured young adult book on it called Identical. When I walked up, and there was a librarian standing next to it, when I walked up to it, I reached for it and said, oh, identical. That sounds interesting. And the librarian, to my utter surprise, grabbed the book and held it back like this. She said, oh, you wouldn't be interested in this. This is for young adults. This is about twins, identical twins, and nine-year-old girl, identical twins. She told me that. Well, we have twins in our family history, so yeah, my interest was piqued. But being she was holding the book back from me and she said it was not for me, I let it go, checked out my books, and went on my way. The Matsu Borough Library Citizens Advisory Committee unanimously voted, the book Identical has no redeeming content, none whatsoever. One committee member said there wasn't one sentence in the book that was redeemable. The book promotes the use of illegal drugs, alcohol by minors, and all manner of illicit perverted sex, including incest. The majority of the citizens committee then voted to have the book removed from the library, from all the borough libraries. One borough employee who hasn't read the book makes the final decision, and she had it moved in all the borough libraries from the young adult to adult section. This book Identical was determined by your librarians to be kept in the young adult section. Sex in this book is dirty, ugly, regrettable, and doesn't encourage any kind of relationship commitment. Bad language and slang is used throughout the book. There was no literary content whatsoever. And you okay this. This is what you okay in your libraries, every one of you. We've been in here pounding and telling you about this and begging you to do something. Nothing. You don't even hear us, I don't think. Okay. I think there's something very dark and evil going on in Palmer. Why should taxpayers pay for this obscene filth? In addition, I just want you to know, this is a different topic. Taxpayers especially want police, fire, dispatchers, and roads funded. Everything else is nonessential luxury, including libraries. So don't go in debt. Don't put the taxpayers in debt for this. Police, fire, and roads and dispatchers are essential to a community.
Jackie, go forth.
You thought you'd get away with not having to hear me. Hi, I'm Jackie Goforth, and I live within 30 seconds of the boundary of Palmer, if I ran. I love analogies, so I'm going to give you one. There's a big family. There's 10 kids. Seven of them have jobs. They're always busy. Three may have jobs, but they usually are there for the family business. They want to find out what's going on with the family. And then something happens. A rock falls on the family room. The damage looks bad. Wow. Everybody wants a new house. Yeah, especially the kids that are there. They really like that mansion down the street like the Joneses have. It'll be tough to finance, though, but hey, we want an atrium, and we want all this luxury stuff, and we want a lot of meeting rooms, and we're going to need a big mortgage. They have a family vote. The five that are there participate, three kids and mom and dad. Four of the five say, do it. They don't care about the cost, just do it. Well, of course, it's an overwhelming vote. 80% said yes. The dream house is designed, but it's trouble. Trouble starts happening. The three kids who voted start putting out messages to all their friends. You need to show up. You need to show up and push to go big. You need to show up and push to go big. All kinds of people do show up, people that have never even been in the house, but their family agrees, okay, we'll go big, but we'll stay at a certain amount. The payments will be scary, but we can make it work. So let's get this outsider guy to come in and help us start managing it. Well, he sees this as a disaster, whether it's real or not. Well, everybody's back. He cancels the cable. He gets rid of the family dog. He wants to sell the cars. And shock, there's no more Wi-Fi. If you want Wi-Fi, you have to go down the street to the Joneses. That's when things go further south. The outsider has actually told everyone not to talk to anyone. Don't you dare talk to anyone. And by the way, he added, he added an addition. For what? The nanny? He adds an addition into the house. Does anyone understand why this is a problem? There's a million-dollar addition to a house without anyone approving it. And no one wants to investigate why? Why would this addition be put on by this outsider who was so worried about money? I have all his emails, or the ones they let me have, and I'm going to be doing a lot of reading. Another thing, when I send out a records request and I ask for vendor emails from Mr. Jelly, vendors are the City of Wasilla, Matcom, you know. I get back, no record found. No record found. Really? I've seen them. Thank you.
Wesley Arts.
Wesley Arts, Palmer Bar. I'm here several different things. Started off with the parking. We have a lot of grandfather businesses in this town with parking. So they actually have underparking for their actual businesses. I would like to see the city make a map and go, how many grandfather businesses and how much in parking are they really supposed to have? I don't want to see the grandfathered parking removed because there's a lot of businesses, but we need to know. How many parking spots are actually out there for how much we need? It's, there's those with the parking lots and those that don't. And those with the parking lots are going to end up suffering for this. So I'd like to see a map. We're going to have to make some sort of exceptions in the parking, especially as grandfather businesses go forward. But someone trying to put in, that's need to 80 parking spots when they only have two, that's a little extreme. When you have places like other restaurants that are expanding and adding their seats without running them before a city and getting code checked on, that's an issue. When they're using 300% of what they're supposed to be using, or they're using 100% more than they're supposed to be using, the city needs to kind of know that when they're looking at this. This is going to, the parking is going to be a rough one. The other one that I wanted to talk about, you guys should request a meeting with the railroad, with the hip for the community. You should put these tough questions that you have for the railroad. You need to know about right-ofways and how the railroad deals with right-ofways. I'm one of those businesses that they're going to shut down Colony. If the railroad starts running trains in there, nothing can be in their 100-foot right-ofway. That means the city loses the train depot. That means that all of Colony Way is gone for pretty much, yeah, most of it. So please, think about this. Have a meeting. Ask the railroad. Put these questions together and ask the railroad these tough questions and go, these are the questions we want answers to. Ask them how much a crossing would be to bring that up to code if we have to pay for that. Ask them how much the tracks would be, not like having Jude sit there and ask these questions and they're giving them estimates, but put it out there where all the community can come and ask these questions, but you guys put in 100 questions that you want answered about this stuff and where the railroad can come prepared. Okay, thank you. And start thinking about next year's budget and how we're going to raise money. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Janson. See, you're on the list.
Yep, I'm still Sarah Janson. So I just want to say, hold tough on the big library. You know what? This is a generational building, and this building will be part of Palmer for, you know, I don't know, 30, 40, 50 years. And part of the problem with the library, of course, is that in the old days, you know, 15% of it was used by City of Palmer residents, and the rest of them were borough residents, of whom we get no money from the borough. So anyway, that's an issue. And now I'm going to make myself even more unpopular, and that is, give up the dreams about the railroad. Not going to happen. Not going to happen. I've been in the room. I was one of the people who got, went to the railroad and said, please, bring the train out for Colony Christmas. I dressed my daughter in an elf costume that was way too big for her, but she was a little cute little elf, so. But the railroad isn't going to spend that money. I mean, first of all, you're talking about, you know, there's conversation about spinning the railroad off from the state, so there you go, and there's a whole nother issue of money. And unless somebody else ponies up the money, it's not going to happen. I've been in those conversations. The city had these conversations 20 years ago. So if you're going to deal with what Wes suggested, you know, set up a line of questions for the railroad, invite them out, invite people to come, and then once you hear those answers, one council just has to be strong enough and do what needs to be done. And that is acknowledge the fact that the railroad isn't going to come back to Palmer. So I don't relish that decision for you, but, you know, you did ask to be elected. And, you know, and I'm going to end on that. And, you know, being an elected official is very difficult, very difficult. You know, people make all sorts of assumptions about who you are, what you are, and how you might react. I do take exception to the woman who spoke earlier about me coming to speak for Mr. Cooper. I wasn't at the meeting. You weren't at the meeting. I wasn't in the room afterwards. I can tell you I've left this room in tears before because a council member was mean and nasty, but, you know, it just kind of comes with the territory. And I hate saying that as a woman, you know, because I don't know what happened. But I do know that you have to have a fairly tough skin. So if, you know, if you felt intimidated, I'm sorry, you know, I don't wish that on anybody, but, and I wish it would change, and I wish a lot of things in life would change. But, you know, I hope, again, that you all can all find a way to go forward. And best of luck.
Is there anyone else for audience participation?
Mr. Mayor, Council, my name is Frank Bell. I just wanted to voice my support and say thanks for the motion to table the investigation indefinitely, although I do like the word forever better, I think. Councilmember Graver got it right with that one. I think it was pretty clear to most people that out of the gate here, the real fatal flaw in that process was that you guys received some pretty unreasonable directives from HR when it came to the hiring process. Maybe should have pushed back on that a little bit more, but given that that was accepted, it can only be described as a failure on the part of HR to make sure an appropriate vetting process took place elsewhere as a result. One could argue that the council should have pushed on HR to make sure they had a detailed and effective plan in place to do so and follow through on it, but I think we can all agree that was the main issue with what happened with hiring Mr. Jelly and really is the only thing that needs to be analyzed and, you know, figure out why that happened, how we can prevent it from happening again. Unfortunately, then, we had this closed-door executive session where you guys decided to terminate, well, accept his resignation and pay him out. And what that led to was sort of a feeling in the community that you had essentially convicted a criminal and then rewarded him for his crimes. So there was really no sense of justice or accountability for all the damage that was done. And it is abhorrent to think that there were council members that felt unsafe or pressured in that meeting. You know, sure, you got to have thick skin, and I agree with almost everything Ms. Janson said, but it is 2024, and I don't think that that should come with the territory, not today. So that's unacceptable. But what that did, that meeting and that decision was essentially pour a 55-gallon drum of gasoline on the dumpster that was Mr. Jelly's tenure here. And that dumpster fire led to a two-month-long rampage of public speculation, armchair conspiracy theories, unverifiable gossip, council infighting, even meeting cancellations, and the sort of dystopian hellscape of blaming and naming and leaking and villainizing. And I think that seriously delayed you all from conducting the city's business at a very critical time of year. And I think a continuing investigation into that beyond what happened with HR would only prolong that and make it worse. Many of you probably don't know this, and you wouldn't know it from looking at me, but I have a couple of college degrees. One of them is a master's degree in psychology, and I worked in therapy for a period of my life. And one phrase I found very effective during that time with people that experienced trauma was, don't let it take more from you than it already has. And Mr. Jelly's traumatic time here has already taken quite a lot from this community. So I think it was a good idea to turn the page, just get a tangible plan together to make sure this HR snafu doesn't happen again, and assure people that you can conduct the city's business in an environment where everyone feels safe and get back to doing what you were elected to do. Or, as my dad would have put it, stop screwing around and get your shit together.
All right. We'll close audience participation. Next, we have councilmember comments. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this is maybe rhetorical, but, you know, our current manager has done a great job for us, you know, not having been in that job before. I mean, he's just doing phenomenal work, obviously a lot of research. I would like to actually propose that we offer him a full-time position as the city manager and forego all the rest of the stuff that we have to go through. And I know he and his wife have approved of that already, so. More importantly, I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving in two days. Hope you can be with your families and love on one another and enjoy life. Thank you.
Councilmember Hudson. Council comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to quickly ask our city attorney to share her thoughts on the scope of executive session.
Madam Attorney?
All right, it took forever to unmute. Would you clarify exactly the question that you'd like?
Yes, I would just like to know, from the city attorney's input, what of executive session is to, what is the purpose of executive session and what is the purpose of keeping executive session private?
So when executive session is authorized by the state, all states and code, it has to fall underneath the Opens Public Meetings Act, right? So there can't be any, that's what people say, the OMA, the Open Meetings Act. And what that means is the purpose of it is that executive session can only occur in specific reasons. Those are codified in our Palmer Code, because they are, we as Americans as a whole do not like the idea of government doing things behind closed doors. So that, but the rules and statutes recognize that there are certain reasons, specifically like trade secrets, negotiations, things that could negatively impact the city or the government as a whole if it was released too prematurely. So as a result of that, participants in an executive session would have a duty under OMA to keep information from that session confidentially, provided that that session is properly called and that the information involved is within the scope of the purpose for it. So in essence, it's kind of like a cone of silence, right? So in essence, the, um, it's kind of like a cone of silence, right? That drops down for only applying to the purpose that that executive session was called for and, and that it comes down to do those things. Um, and that's where the scope of just that specific that's being publicly noticed, that purpose comes down for. Um, information that could be shared from an executive session that's either been previously publicly discussed isn't considered confidentiality. And there's a really strong legal argument that any information discussed in an executive session which falls outside of the publicly noticed scope of the meeting would also not be considered confidential because it doesn't fall under the justifications for executive session.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, thank you. Thank you, um, Ms. Heath, um, our city attorney for the, for that. I also just wanted to point out that it is deeply concerning to learn that a department director has interfered with a high-risk SWAT mission involving the police department and ATF last week, aimed at apprehending an armed and dangerous drug dealer with a prior conviction for involvement in a murder. The decision to deny law enforcement access to critical intelligence and plans for the residents has greatly compromised the safety of officers that were on an already perilous mission. This is an example of continuing internal obstructionism that is occurring in the wake of the transition between city managers and needs to be a priority to be addressed by our new city manager. Our job as a city council is to create policy and the city manager is to implement these policies. We create a policy, they create a product. For the system to work, the council is to be given every variable and option for a large policy decision they are making, such as dispatch center. And the city manager needs to facilitate cohesiveness and remove obstruction so the policies can be implemented on behalf of the public. I would like to ask for council support to task the city attorney to delve into this further to make sure there are no hindrances of prosecution that the state or anyone else could hold the city accountable for.
Councilmember Graver?
Can we ask for more information on this? Are we allowed to? Is there someone that can speak to that situation?
I don't know. I, I don't know what would be appropriate in the meeting. Um, would, could you?
Can the attorney speak on this? I was going to say, um, I, I am not fully familiar with all the details of that, but at the council's discretion, that is something I could work with the city manager and the department head to evaluating. If, um, those details are accurate, I would be concerned in terms of, um, wanting to evaluate for liability and that's something I could confidentially do. And then if the need arises, certainly, um, address it with the city manager. And then need arise, also share it with the council discreetly as, you know, it's hard for me to talk about something in that general, but that's something that would be appropriate for the attorney to look into, yes.
In that case, I second Councilwoman Hudson.
Okay. Anything else, Councilmember Hudson?
Yes, and then I just wanted to thank you to everyone for being here and also happy Thanksgiving.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this, in the theme of Thanksgiving, I just want to say how thankful I am to be able to have this opportunity to be up here and serve in all of you. Thank you of all of you for speaking. It is, it's such a pleasure to hear you because a lot of times, you know, we kind of get in a bubble and be able to hear what you ever say is, is beyond important. What you're doing is so important for us. And a big thank you to our interim city manager. You've been an amazing job. Uh, you stepped into a lot and you've been doing very well. You're very level-headed, you're very clear, you're doing everything, communicating really well. So I just want to say thank you for doing that. And, uh, you know, as we kind of wrapped up our budget, I just wanted to just, just look closely at this. And we need to make sure that we're understanding this and ask, where does a bond payment fit in here? Because we do have to ask this question here pretty soon. This is one of the reasons why, I mean, I, I love the library design, I love, love, I love the building, but this was my concern and why I was trying to come up with an option for a 10-million-dollar library design months earlier during the design process. Because it's, it is a concern. We're, we're over here fighting over whether we can have police vehicles or greater for the road. And they're all important. And the library is important too. It's not, this is, this is not something that is insurmountable, but we have to plan for this and make sure that, that we are looking at all avenues. Because we, we also need vehicles for community development. That wasn't even mentioned. That was put off again this year. So, you know, it's, it's kind of a dilemma that we have to be mindful of and, uh, understand what we can look at. And I know we were doing some really great work trying to come out with, with funding options. Uh, but you know, one thing I would, I would like to just make sure that we're looking at grant opportunities. We have a grant company that the Palmer Police are, are using. And I would just, uh, highly, highly recommend that we look into using that grant company here to, when the time is appropriate during the design process, to look at, at library grants. There are several out there that can help offset this cost. Because, you know, uh, if we have a 10-million-dollar bond, the 20-year payment that we got by our finance director is going to be about $760,000 a year. Again, not, not insurmountable, but it's going to be tough. And we have to make sure that we're looking at every possible source of funding that we can. And that includes, you know, I, again, you know, federal funding, state funding. We already got a lot from the state and that's very appreciative, but there's so much more that we have to do. It's going to be a lot of work for us here, this council, but something that, that we can do, but we just need to really be cognizant of that. Thank you.
Councilmember Alcantara.
Now you're going to hold me for last there, Mr. Mayor, but thank you, I appreciate it. Um, so I felt, uh, I felt that tonight we kind of took a little first step towards normalcy. And, uh, I think having some of those unanimous votes on things that are very important, like, uh, dispatchers and obi-od officer and, uh, new vehicles, other things, um, it was nice to see that, uh, play itself out. So I was, uh, really, really happy to see that. Um, you know, it seems like there's some folks that, uh, that, that want to talk about October 9th a little bit and that was a really terrible, terrible day. And certainly more should have been done by a lot of people. But I'll tell you, I've known a couple of these council members up here, these young ladies. Uh, one just for literally two months ago today, I met her for the first time at a candidate forum in the depot. And I've known, uh, the council member to my right now for about two and a half years I've been on council. These are tough people. These aren't people that, uh, you know, shy away from a fight. But what, what happened that night was beyond just them being tough. I mean, it was, uh, certainly something that should never have been allowed to happen and hopefully won't ever be allowed to happen again. I'll own a part of that for sure. But, um, I do think, um, you know, the, the comments that Mr. Cooper made about our interim city manager kind of seconded by Deputy Mayor Tudor. Uh, we have a gentleman here that has a physics degree from the U.S. Naval Academy. One of the toughest things you'll ever get. Uh, he's a helicopter pilot. He's a steady hand on the, you know, on the till. And, uh, man, we're going to go into a process where we're going to put way more weight into whether someone's been a city manager of a town of 800 people or 1,200 people or, you know, the same process that led us to a, a very bad hire a few months ago when we have a, a person with, uh, you know, not, not just a degree, nothing wrong with a degree from, uh, anywhere you get it, but, uh, but a degree from the U.S. Naval Academy. I don't know. I, I think there's a, I certainly wasn't just in jest when I said I seconded that motion to think that we could have a city manager and not go through a, another process, but I'm sure it would be in the minority on that. Uh, I'm going to continue to hold tough on a 16-million-dollar library um, that our, our voters approved. And I know we'll talk, and I, I appreciated the comments from some of the audience members about how things work out, but that's the power of the ballot box. And the people that show up are the people that you listen to. And I, you know, always be accused of being a little glass-half-full guy or maybe too much Pollyanna, but we are not a city that's in dire financial straits. I've been to communities in dire financial straits. Palmer isn't one of them. And if you look at our worst-case scenario of needing the maximum for a library, yes, that's 770,000. If you look at the fact that we've got money aside, we've got some money from insurance, uh, may get future funding from who knows where, we may not. But it, it's almost, uh, it's almost a complete leap to think we're going to have to come up with 10 million of our own. Initially, I said 8 million should have been the cap on the bonding package. Uh, that didn't go forward. I was the only one that voted to approve that. I still think that a four to six to eight million out of the city is what we're looking at. And that stretched out over a lot of years of bond payments. So, uh, I'll, I'll continue to be an advocate for the library. I think the process that Gary Wolf's going through is a good one. And, um, I just think the most important thing to end this is, uh, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I hope you have a great time with your families, if you're able to do that. Um, uh, it really is a, a great holiday to, you know, gather around, stuff yourself and, uh, and hopefully, uh, enjoy some time with your loved ones. So, uh, thanks for all your time today.
Councilmember Graver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I realize I haven't been talking into my microphone very much because it's a lot louder this way. So hopefully y'all can hear. But, um, I wanted to say that my phone is back working. So if any constituents have been trying to reach me, I'm sorry. I don't have anything from the past, you know, since Thursday morning. Um, I have some emails I've received and hopefully, um, you guys were able to do that, but that's working again. Um, uh, I wanted to ask, uh, out of curiosity about the parking situation, which I am keeping a close eye on. I want you guys to know that, um, we're taking that seriously. And we do want public input, but that's not the end-all, be-all as far as, you know, different weight goes into different things. And we know that, um, there are certain members, you know, constituents and, and business owners um, who are more affected by that, and so we'll keep that in mind. Um, sorry, back to my question. Uh, what is, what does the city do as far as code enforcement for parking violations? As far as if it's a business or, um, you know, restaurant, that's, that's not notifying the city with an expansion or, um, because I, I mean, obviously grandfathering in is, um, acceptable in most cases. But when it comes to, you know, additions and all that, how does the city handle that? Um, and is that something that business owners are required to bring to the council?
Mr. Manager, uh, there was more than one question in there, but yeah.
To my knowledge, when a, when a business wants to expand, that means their building onto the building is going to change. So it's going to go to the building inspector. And part of the building inspector's checklist is going through community development for, for the compliance portion of that.
A follow-up, so if, if they're not expanding, but they're adding seating to maybe a previously unused portion of their building, is that something they need to take before the council or to the, um, through the process?
I don't know the answer to that. I'd have to get back to you.
Okay.
We're trying to get through council comments. Any more council comments?
I can talk to you afterwards. Um, uh, I, well, my husband is doing something surprise for my birthday. It's a trip and so I won't be here on the third, so I didn't want to say no. Happy Thanksgiving.
Councilmember Best?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we made it through the budget process. Um, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and be safe.
Right. We managed to pass the budget in November. Impressive. We're adjourned. Bye, Sarah.
Bye, thank you.
Chief, clearly my priorities are not yours, so whatever. Whatever.